So good morning, everyone. This hearing before the Health Systems Planning Unit identified by docket number 1932339 CON is being held on November 18th to establish proton therapy services in Wallingford, Connecticut by acquisition of new technology and a computed tomography simulator. On March 14 of 2020, Governor Ned Lamott issued Executive Order 7B, which in relevant part suspended in-person open meeting requirements. I will note that Executive Order 7B was scheduled to expire after having been extended to November 9 of 2020 and then was extended a second time by Executive Order 9L to February 9 of 2021 to ensure continuity of operations while maintaining the necessary social distance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. The Office of Health Strategy is holding this hearing remotely. We ask that all members of the public and everyone who is not actively testifying mute their device that they are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around them. The public hearing is being held pursuant to Connecticut General Statute Section 19A-639A and will be conducted as a contested case in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 54 of the Connecticut General Statutes. My name is Michaela Mitchell. Victoria Veltri, the Executive Director of the Office of Health Strategy, has designated me to serve as the hearing officer for this matter. My colleagues Brian Carney and Lindsay Donston are also here to assist me in gathering facts related to this application. The Certificate of Need process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the parties, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process, and accordingly, we ask that decorum be maintained by all present during these proceedings. The hearing is being recorded and will be transcribed by BCT Reporting LLC. All documents related to this hearing that have been or will be submitted to the Office of Health Strategy are available for review through our CON portal, which is accessible on the Office of Health Strategy's CON webpage. In making its decision, the Health Systems Planning Unit, or HSP, will consider and make written findings concerning the principles and guidelines set forth in Section 19A-639 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Yale New Haven Health Services Corporation and Hartford Healthcare Corporation are parties to this proceeding. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Carney to read into the record those documents already appearing in HSP's table of record in this case. All documents have been identified in the table of record for reference purposes. Brian, are you all set?
Good morning. This is Brian Carney of the Office of Health Strategy, unmuted. At this time, I'd like to enter into the record Exhibits A through U.
So in addition to that, Attorney Fusco, we have proposed Exhibits B. B is the hearing agenda. W is the table of record, which probably we should probably should do that as W. So actually, W is not going to be the table of record. W is going to be the Connecticut Post article, which I sent to you. I don't know if you've had time to kind of look over that and tell me what your thoughts are about it.
Yeah, this is Jen Fusco. I did have a chance to look it over. We have no objection to it being entered as long as we have an opportunity to respond to it, and I assume you folks have questions on it, so we're comfortable with you putting it in.
Thank you. So that is going to be Exhibit W. We may need some late files, but the final table of record will also receive an exhibit number at the end of the hearing and after we have taken in all evidence. So B is the agenda, and then W is the Connecticut Post article. Thank you so much. Any objections on any of the other exhibits?
No objections, but I did just want to clarify on both the hearing agenda, and I see on your introductory slide, the docket number is incorrect. You have it listed as 20-32339. It's actually 19. I know it's been a long year, but and I see several of the documents have had it different, but just for the record, it's 1932339 CON.
Got it, and we're going to revise all of those.
That's fine.
For the record. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Great. So what is going to happen next is the applicants will present their direct testimony. HSP will ask questions of the applicant. We're going to hear from the public at 4:00 PM. I do know that there have been some requests to have some members of the public speak earlier, and I do reserve the right to allow public officials and members of the public to testify outside of the order of the agenda, so we'll work that through with the applicants as that occurs. I'm just going to ask Attorney Fusco to just kind of give me a little bit of a reminder, you know, in terms of when people have to leave, so we'll accommodate you in that way.
Good, thank you.
Yep. I would like to also advise the applicants that we may ask questions related to your application that you feel you might feel that you've already addressed, and we are going to do that for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge about the proposal and also for the purpose of clarification. But I just want to reassure you that we've read the application completeness responses and prefiled testimony, so just bear with us if we ask you something that you feel like you've already answered. In addition to that, as this hearing is again being held virtually, we ask that all participants, to the extent possible, enable use of their video cameras when testifying or commenting during the proceedings, and that anyone who's not testifying or commenting mute their electronic devices, including telephones, televisions, and any other devices that are not being used to access the hearing. And then when we go off the record, participants in the hearing can mute their devices and may disable their cameras when we do that, so that conversations could be held privately. If we go off the record, I will make sure that I provide a warning to the parties one minute prior to going back on the record so that you can situate yourselves accordingly. If you need any additional time for cleaning, you know, for any type of COVID protocol, just let me know. Registration to render public comment will begin at 3:00 PM. OHS will hear public comment at 4:00 PM. Comments will be taken during the hearing in the order established by OHS, and I will call each individual by name when it is his or her turn to speak. I do want to say that we are going to take a break from 1:00 to about 1:45 so that people can eat lunch or, you know, confer with one another with regard to any questions. We're just going to make sure that we take a break from 1:00 to 1:45. At this time, I would like all of the individuals who are going to testify on behalf of the parties to this application to be formally identified by their attorney, after which I'm going to swear them in. And I just want to acknowledge, Attorney Fusco, thank you for sending the witness list for the court reporter. So we'll just swear everyone in at this time.
Okay, so I mean, and I don't know if you want folks to, I can introduce you to the people who are in the room, and then I think I sent you the list of folks who'd be remote, but we can start with Art Lemay from Yale New Haven, Donna Hanley from Hartford Healthcare, Lori Pickens, Lori Pickens, I'm sorry, from Yale New Haven, Kristy Gaffords from Yale New Haven, we have, I'm sorry, from Hartford Healthcare, we have Dr. Ken Roberts from Yale New Haven, Dr. Andy Solner from Hartford Healthcare. And then also to testify remotely, we have Chris Chandler from Proton International and Nancy Mendenhall from the University of Florida Proton Therapy Institute. And I know I did give you a list of others, so it would include Jerry Boivier from Hartford Healthcare, Tom Newman from Yale New Haven, Mario Danini from Yale New Haven, Fred Sorbo from Hartford Healthcare, those are finance folks, Susan Manning from FTI, she's the healthcare economist who did the report. Am I missing anyone else? I think that's, I think that's it. If I've missed anyone, I can, but I think that sounds right. I have a list. I think I might have brought the list, let me just make sure. Just in case. Yeah, I think that's everyone. If for some reason we need someone else to answer a question, could they be sworn, they could be sworn in? I mean, I don't anticipate anyone beyond these folks, but if something comes up that requires a different witness, could you swear them in during the hearing if need be?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah. I'm going to try to remember everyone that you named off because I don't have the list in front of me, but I'm going to ask everybody who is going to be testifying today, if you wouldn't mind raising your right hand for me so that I can swear you in. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? I'm going to start with Mr. Lemay.
I do.
Ms. Hanley.
I do.
Ms. Pickens.
I do.
Ms. Gaffords.
I do.
Ms. Dirty.
I do.
Mr. Roberts.
I do, Dr. Roberts.
Pardon me if I don't say doctor, I'm so sorry. I do. Dr. Solner.
I do.
Okay. Mr. Chandler.
I do.
Dr. Mendenhall.
I do.
Mr. Boivier. He's out of the room.
He's remote, I don't know if he's muted.
Okay.
We can move on, maybe he can come back.
Don't worry. Mr. Newman.
Can you hear me now? I do, sorry about that.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Newman.
I do.
Mr. Danini.
I do.
Ms. Sorbo.
I do.
Ms. Manning.
I do.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Just remember, when giving your testimony, make sure you state your full name and adopt any written testimony that you have submitted on the record prior to testifying today. The applicants may now proceed with their testimony at this time.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, and thank you. My name is Art Lemay, and I'm the Vice President for Network Development for Smile Cancer Hospital at Yale New Haven. I adopt my prefiled testimony. It's my pleasure to speak to you today in support of the Certificate of Need application filed by Yale New Haven Health and Hartford Healthcare for the establishment of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center in Wallingford. This proposal marks an historic collaboration between the state's two largest health systems that has been over four years in the making. If approved, the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will provide access to cutting-edge, life-saving cancer technology that's currently not available in the state of Connecticut. Bringing proton therapy to Connecticut will extend the scope of services provided by our already robust cancer programs, will bring extensive clinical expertise and resources together for the Connecticut residents without requiring our residents to travel out of state for this specialty treatment. Yale New Haven Health's unprecedented strategic partnership with Hartford Healthcare for the delivery of proton therapy in Connecticut is evidence of our fierce commitment to the care of cancer patients in this state. Seeing this critically important project through to completion is one of the reasons why I continue to work beyond my planned retirement in early 2020. My colleague from Hartford Healthcare, Donna Hanley, who has also moved on to a different position since we began this work together four years ago, will testify to the same commitment to this project. You've also received written testimony, and you'll hear from Lori Pickens, the Senior Vice President of Oncology Services and Executive Director for Cancer Smile Cancer Hospital, and Kristy Gafford, the Senior VP of the Cancer Institute Operation for Hartford Healthcare. Both have testified to their health systems' respective cancer programs and how their programs have evolved over the last decade. Dr. Kenneth Roberts and Dr. Andrew Solner have collaborated for years in the field of radiation oncology and have both supported this collaboration from the very beginning. Christopher Chandler from Proton International would discuss the evolution of proton therapy, its clinical efficacy, how it works, and who it benefits. And Dr. Nancy Mendenhall from the University of Florida Proton Therapy Institute, who will give you an insider's perspective on the operation of the proton therapy center. Yale New Haven and Hartford Healthcare were for many years monitoring the advances and successes of proton therapy prior to our collaboration. And in 2010, there were only nine proton centers in the U.S., but the science and technology was evolving and clinical research advancing rapidly. By 2015, five years later, there were already 19 proton centers operational in the U.S., and many more were in development. At that time, proton therapy was available or in development in Massachusetts, in New York, and in New Jersey, and still today, Connecticut residents needing this therapy are forced to either endure the hardships associated with traveling long distances or forego this life-saving therapy altogether. Our journey together, Yale New Haven Health and Hartford Healthcare, began in 2016 when we were invited by the Metro Hartford Alliance and Economic Development Organization and the City of Hartford's Chamber of Commerce to explore a consortium of Connecticut hospitals to bring proton therapy into Connecticut. The group was asked to explore a novel proposal from a European manufacturer to bring both a research and clinical site into the state. While the hospitals concluded that it was not the right, the suitable technology at that time, the concept of collaborating among the Connecticut hospitals was actually studied and gained traction, at least for the two of the hospitals that proceeded to move forward. In 2017, our two health systems entered into a strategic partnership to explore collaboration to develop the first proton center. This made sense, recognizing that each health system brings to this collaboration clinical expertise, research capabilities, and other important resources. Most important, both hospitals and both health systems were very focused on bringing this technology into Connecticut in the most cost-effective, financially viable way without unnecessary duplication of services. We jointly engaged Proton International as a consultant to explore the patient demand in the state and assess the viability of a consortium model. We chose Proton International to do this work as consultants because of their expertise in developing and operating proton centers around the U.S. Proton International confirmed after four months of work that what our two health systems had in mind had actually successfully been implemented in other centers across the country, and it was viable here in Connecticut. So in 2018, Yale New Haven Health and Hartford Healthcare began working together to develop a business model, identify a central, easily accessible location in the state, and develop a selection process for a third party with expertise in implementing, financing, and operating proton centers. Ms. Hanley will discuss this process in greater detail and tell you how and why we chose Proton International to help guide us through this work. In conclusion, this proposal is all about bringing life-saving proton therapy closer to home for patients in this state. It will directly benefit patients in Connecticut, and it will allow local basic scientists and clinical investigators to conduct research to further explore the benefits of the technology. If approved, our unprecedented collaboration will bring unmatched clinical expertise, a depth of experience in treating cancer patients, a relationship with an experienced developer and manager of proton facilities, and a coherent strategy for establishing and operating a first-of-its-kind proton therapy center in the state. Thank you again for your time, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Good morning, Attorney Mitchell, and members of the Office of Health Strategy staff. My name is Donna Hanley, and I'm a Senior Vice President for Hartford Healthcare and President of Hartford Healthcare's East Region. I adopt my prefiled testimony. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about our plan to establish a proton therapy center. Connecticut Proton Therapy Center in Wallingford is part of a joint venture with Proton International. First and foremost, I would like to extend my thanks on behalf of Hartford Healthcare, Yale New Haven Health Services, and our partner, Proton International, really for the extraordinary efforts that the OHS staff has made to keep the CON process moving during these unprecedented times. That may be the most commonly used word in our vocabulary, unprecedented. Prior to serving in my role, my current role, I was the Vice President of Operations for the Cancer Institute at Hartford Healthcare. This affords me additional insight into Hartford Healthcare's cancer services and how this service can advance our shared goals of decreasing healthcare costs and promoting higher quality, better access, and more value for healthcare consumers within the state of Connecticut. The collaboration between Hartford Healthcare and Yale New Haven Health Services for the establishment of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will lead to a historic partnership that will shape the future of cancer care in the state of Connecticut. It brings together the clinical experience and resources of the state's two largest health systems, as well as the expertise of our third-party vendor that has developed and operated proton centers both in the United States and internationally. It is important to highlight that Proton International, another key player in the development operation of Connecticut Proton Treatment Center. After a thorough vetting process, Hartford Healthcare and Yale New Haven Health Services selected Proton International to assist with our technology selection, financing, and constructing, as well as the management and operation of the facility. Proton International was chosen for its reputation as an established and experienced developer and operator of proton centers throughout the country. The Proton International's team's experience and expertise will have a significant favorable impact on the development, operations, and ultimate success of the Connecticut Proton Treatment Center. This proposal is designed to provide proton therapy services to all Connecticut residents through provider and self-referral. A vast majority of patients are expected to come from Hartford Healthcare and Yale New Haven Health Systems due to being the largest providers of comprehensive cancer care in the state. The Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will further the goals and objectives of the state of Connecticut as set forth in the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan in a number of ways. This includes, but is not limited to, improving the health of Connecticut residents, increasing the accessibility, continuity, and quality of health services, and promoting cost-effective services while limiting the duplication of services. Encouraging collaboration among healthcare providers to develop healthcare-delivering networks is also a guiding principle of the statewide healthcare facilities and services plan. This partnership represents collaboration amongst providers at the highest level. The proposed collaboration between Yale New Haven Health Services and Hartford Healthcare brings together the Academic Medical Center and several other teaching hospitals, a licensed children's hospital, as well as an affiliation with the only other children's hospital in the state. Additionally, the Connecticut Proton Treatment Center will be involved with comprehensive cancer programs that are implemented by both health systems, offering complementary diagnostic and treatment services necessary to support proton therapy centers. The proposal before you today, if approved, would pave the way for a first-of-its-kind in-the-state proton therapy center, making this advanced, life-saving cancer treatment available for Connecticut residents at an affordable cost. We ask OHS to approve this proposal of establishing a proton therapy center in Wallingford for the benefit of the state of Connecticut. I thank you for your time. I have with me today colleagues from Hartford Healthcare, Yale New Haven Health Services, and Proton International, and we are also available to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori.
Good morning, Attorney Mitchell and members of the Office of Health Strategy staff. My name is Lori Pickens, and I am Senior Vice President of Oncology Services for Yale New Haven Health System and the Executive Director of the Smile Cancer Hospital. I adopt my prefiled testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of the Certificate of Need application filed by the Hartford Healthcare Corporation and Yale New Haven Health Services for establishment of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. Like my colleagues, I am excited about this partnership between Hartford Healthcare and Yale New Haven Health System to bring cutting-edge, life-saving cancer technology to Connecticut. In the interest of time, I will not be giving remarks today, but I am available to answer any questions you have about my testimony or this project. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good morning, Attorney Mitchell and members of the OHS staff. My name is Kristy Gafford, and I am the Senior Vice President of Cancer Institute Operations for Hartford Healthcare. I adopt my prefiled testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of the Certificate of Need application filed by Hartford Healthcare Corporation and Yale New Haven Health Services for the establishment of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. As you've heard from Lori and others, the establishment of this proton therapy center represents an absolutely historic collaboration between the state's largest health systems and providers of comprehensive cancer services in Connecticut. I'm so pleased to be part of this, and I'm very eager to move forward with the development of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. In the interest of time, I will not be giving my remarks today, but I am available to answer any questions you have about my testimony or this project. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Attorney Mitchell and members of the OHS staff. My name is Ken, Dr. Ken Roberts, and I'm a professor of therapeutic radiology at the School of Medicine. I'm also Director of Pediatric Radiotherapy Services at Yale and also Associate Chief of Radiation Oncology at Yale New Haven Hospital. I've been practicing radiation oncology for almost 30 years, and I adopt my prefiled testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of the CON we have filed in partnership with Hartford Healthcare to bring equipment utilizing new technology to the state and establishing a proton therapy center in Wallingford. I would like to extend my personal thanks and on behalf of Yale New Haven Health Services, Hartford Healthcare, and our partner, Proton International, recognizing the extraordinary efforts that the OHS staff has made to keep the CON process moving during these remarkable times with the COVID pandemic. My remarks today will be focused on the evolution of proton beam therapy as a cancer treatment modality and the clinical efficacy and of proton therapy as compared to other cancer therapies. And I have to say that I'm very excited that we are at the cusp of being able to bring to Connecticut what I believe to be an important cancer therapy modality. From the perspective of being in the field of radiation oncology for three decades, I've seen many significant technological improvements to radiotherapy that have made it more effective, targeted, and safe with improved patient outcomes. I am excited to point out that I believe that proton radiotherapy particularly stands out as a major development in the field and continues to evolve with better scientific and clinical basis through our collective ongoing experience. Allow me to simplistically point out that proton therapy is a type of external beam radiation therapy that uses protons rather than X-rays, also called photons, as in conventional radiation therapy, to treat and kill cancer cells. Proton beam technology has been available since the 1980s, but was in limited use due to the high cost of implementation and initially few studies documenting improved clinical outcomes. Yet it's promised to improve cancer therapy by the characteristics of how proton beams are much more focused than X-rays, and their ability to deliver radiation dose to a tumor has been well-understood by those of us in the field of radiation oncology. The two hospital systems partnering in this proposed proton therapy program have been very conservative with embracing this innovative technology, such that there have been many years of discussing and observing the clinical and technologic develops of proton radiotherapy that now brings us to the present and well-timed crossroads. that now brings us to the present and well-timed crossroads. Improvements in technology have significantly reduced the cost, improvements in this proton therapy technology have significantly reduced the cost of installation, and the number of proton beam therapy rooms have nearly tripled worldwide over the last 10 years. Where there were a little less than a dozen proton facilities in the United States 10 years ago, there are now, I believe, 36 proton centers in the United States. With this growth, as the number of proton therapy centers grew, more clinical trials have been conducted and hundreds of research papers published bolstering the evidence for efficacy and cost-effectiveness of this therapy. There have been important technical enhancements in proton beam therapy since its introduction in the 1980s. The first commercially available proton delivery system is used, what can be characterized as a passive scattering system, to produce clinically useful proton beams. Special filters and collamators had to be physically placed in the beam path to further shape it for individual patient needs. Now, all new proton beam therapy systems to deliver and are equipped with, excuse me, all new proton beam therapy systems are now equipped with a magnetic steering mechanism as well as fast beam energy switching devices to deliver individual proton pencil beams in which a distribution of spots of proton radiation energy may be individually tailored to appropriately overlap within a tumor target and better conform radiation dose to the shape and anatomic position of that tumor. This in turn importantly reduces radiation dose to nearby normal tissues. Pencil beam technology also reduces the time of treatment for patients for each session of therapy. In the United States medical marketplace, there are five proton equipment vendors that include Mevion Ion Beam Applications, also known as IBA, Hitachi, Proton International, and Varian Medical Systems. They have each worked out robust and sophisticated treatment delivery systems with an option of a one-room configuration that has markedly reduced costs of proton therapy, allowing for its enhanced diffusion in the medical marketplace with improved geographic distribution for improved patient access. Our team has selected the IBA Proteus One proton therapy technology for the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center, which is one of the most advanced compact systems available for providing proton beam therapy. Allow me to get back to basic concepts. Proton therapy is a type of radiation therapy, a treatment that uses high-energy ionizing beams to treat tumors by disrupting a tumor's DNA or genetic code in individual tumor cells. Radiation therapy using X-rays, again also known as photons, has been long used to treat cancers and even non-cancers for benign tumors. Proton therapy is a newer type of radiation therapy that deposits energy from positively-charged particles called protons. Proton therapy delivers more precise radiation doses to cancerous tissues with increased accuracy compared to traditional X-ray radiation treatments and with less collateral damage to nearby healthy tissues. Compared to proton, compared to photon radiation treatment modalities, proton therapy provides long-term benefits to the patient as a result of reduced radiation toxicity, fewer side effects, and reduced need for other medical and continuing care. Proton beam therapy may also allow for higher radiation dose to some tumors, increasing the chances that all the tumor cells are destroyed and improving cure rates. This is a particular benefit to pediatric patients as well as adults when there are tumors near vital organs. Traditionally, radiation therapy is delivered with X-rays with an individual photon beam passing through normal tissue on its way to and from a target tumor. While increased radiation to tumor cells leads to better control of the cancer, increased radiation dose to normal tissue leads to higher likelihood of side effects. And finding the sweet spot between tumor control and minimal or acceptable risk of side effects is what we often refer to as finding the optimal therapeutic ratio. Protons are charged particles with mass, which leads to differences in how they deliver dose along their path. Compared to photons, when protons enter the body, they have a lower entrance dose. As charged particles, the protons gradually slow down as they give up energy and deposit more dose as they slow down at the end of their path in tissue. The result is that protons deposit most of their energy over a small range that is known as the Bragg peak. Importantly, unlike photons or X-rays, there is no exit dose with protons. That is, no significant radiation dose is delivered beyond the target as protons stop in tissue immediately after this Bragg peak. This allows the sparing of normal tissues outside the target from radiation and leads to less total radiation dose to the body. While variable from patient to patient, the amount of radiation dose delivered to normal tissue may be reduced on the order of 50 to 60% when we use proton beam therapy over conventional X-rays. While this is significant in its own right, it has been the cost-benefit ratio with protons that has been the source of debate. We believe that now is the right time for proton therapy, for a proton therapy center in Connecticut, as the costs have been brought down and the benefits have been increasingly demonstrated in an important subset of patients who require radiotherapy. A few comments on the clinical efficacy and benefits to patients. The American Society of Radiation Oncology evaluated the clinical efficacy data for proton beam therapy and developed a model policy to guide quality assurance and insurance coverage for proton beam therapy. It was stated that proton therapy is considered reasonable in instances where sparing surrounding normal tissue cannot, quote, "cannot be adequately achieved with photon-based radiotherapy," end quote, and can benefit the patient. Additional studies on proton beam therapy over the past 10 years have further cemented its place in cancer therapy, limited mainly by its availability. Like photon radiation therapy, proton beam therapy is often used in conjunction with surgery and/or chemotherapy to effectively treat cancers. The improved therapeutic ratio with proton beam therapy has been measured in some instances with better cure rates for a few types of cancers, but most of the time, the benefits of proton radiotherapy results from reduction in side effects and more difficult and often qualitative rather than quantitative endpoints measure. With proton beam therapy, the goal is to reduce toxicity by reducing radiation doses to uninvolved normal tissues. Key benefits to proton therapy compared to traditional X-ray therapy are, one, less exposure to, less exposure time to radiation prevents injury to critical and developing tissues and organs. Two, proton beam therapy allows for a higher radiation dose to tumors and increases the chance that all of the tumor cells targeted will be destroyed, thus improving cure rates. Three, proton beam therapy often results in fewer and less acute side effects, such as lowered blood counts, fatigue, and nausea. Four, there is evolving data that late-occurring side effects from proton beam radiotherapy are reduced relative to X-ray therapy. As an example, an example would be the reduced intellectual and cognitive impairments in children with brain tumors who undergo proton beam radiotherapy. Five, while more studies are needed, there have been, there's been scientific speculation that proton beam therapy compared to X-ray therapy would have a lower risk of causing secondary cancers, and there are a host of preliminary studies supporting that. And finally, there is emerging data that lower side effects of proton beam radiotherapy translate into lower hospitalization rates, reduced procedures to manage treatment toxicity, and improved quality of life for our patients. In terms of the target population, proton therapy is a benefit for treating patients whose tumors have not yet spread or for tumors that are located near vital parts of the body, such as the eye, brain, spinal cord, heart, and liver. Proton therapy benefits are most poignant for treating pediatric cancer patients who have many decades ahead of them after being cured, and developing tissues such as brain, bones, and muscle are exquisitely sensitive to the effects of radiation therapy. Proton beam therapy can mitigate the risk of lifelong effects of irradiation, such as neurologic effects when treating brain tumors. And again, there's preliminary evidence that points to a reduced risk of secondary cancers. Tumors where proton beam radiotherapy allows for higher doses of radiation with better cure rates include certain tumors of the base of the skull or near the spinal cord, eye tumors such as melanomas, liver or biliary tract tumors, and unresectable sarcomas. Importantly, some patients require a second course of radiotherapy to the same region of the body, and in this situation, protons are of particular importance to give patients a second chance at treatment while being better able to mitigate the risk of complications from repeat radiotherapy.
I'm just gonna, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just want to ask everybody to make sure that they are muted. Sorry to interrupt you during your, during your talk. Go ahead.
Thank you, Attorney Mitchell, and actually almost done. In a number of common adult cancers, such as certain head and neck cancers, adult head and neck cancers, lung cancers, esophageal cancers, lymphomas within the chest, breast cancers where regional node radiation is important, proton radiotherapy reduces complications of cancer therapy and improves the patient's quality of life. In conclusion, thank you again for the opportunity to speak in support of this proposal to establish the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center and add proton beam therapy services to the complement of advanced cancer care available in the state of Connecticut. On behalf of my clinical colleagues in both health systems, we are eager to move forward with this project on behalf of all cancer patients in our state. I thereby strongly urge OHS to approve our CON application, and I am, of course, available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Attorney Mitchell and members of the OHS staff. My name is Andrew Sauner, M.D., and I am Director of the Hartford Healthcare Cancer Institute at Hartford Hospital, a part of Hartford Healthcare Corporation. I have been a practicing radiation oncologist for more than 30 years and have been part of the HHC system since 1982. Academically, I hold the rank of Clinical Professor at the University of Connecticut School of Medicine. I adopt my prefiled testimony. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about our plan to establish a proton therapy center, Connecticut Proton Therapy Center, in Wallingford, Connecticut, as part of a joint venture with Yale New Haven Health Services. First and foremost, I would also like to extend my thanks on behalf of Hartford Healthcare, Yale New Haven Health Services, and our partner, Proton International, for the extraordinary efforts that OHS staff have made to keep the CON process moving during these unprecedented times. You've heard my colleague, Dr. Kenneth Roberts, testify about proton beam therapy, how it has evolved as a treatment modality, the clinical efficacy of proton therapy for certain types of cancer, and its ability to significantly reduce debilitating side effects associated with conventional radiation therapy. My testimony today will focus on why we need to offer proton therapy in the state of Connecticut. As proton therapy technology has evolved and its clinical efficacy has been studied, applications have expanded, and there are now many patients in Connecticut who would benefit from proton therapy as opposed to traditional photon-based radiation. As more patients are determined to be good candidates for proton therapy, we as clinicians find ourselves referring these patients to proton therapy centers in the neighboring states of New York, New Jersey, and Massachusetts due to the lack of availability of this service in our home state. Connecticut Proton Therapy Center is a joint venture between Hartford Healthcare and Yale New Haven Health System, the two state, the state's two largest health systems and providers of comprehensive cancer services. The health systems have decided to locate the center in Wallingford, as this is a central location in Connecticut for Connecticut residents roughly equidistant from our two centers in New Haven, the Smilow Cancer Hospital, and our institute at Hartford Hospital, the health system's most heavily utilized cancer treatment centers. Currently, the only existing proton therapy centers in the region are located in Boston, Massachusetts, the Francis Burr Proton Therapy Center at Massachusetts General Hospital, New York, New York, the New York Proton Center, Somerset, New Jersey, the ProCure Proton Therapy Center, and New Brunswick, New Jersey, the Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital. Proton therapy is typically administered five days per week, and a course of therapy can range from one to nine weeks, depending upon the type of cancer, the location of the tumor, and other patient-related factors. Industry average for proton radiation therapy has been on the order of 27 daily treatments for approximately five and a half weeks. In order to receive proton therapy, residents of Connecticut need to drive several hundred miles round trip on a daily basis or arrange for a week's worth of overnight accommodations near the out-of-state proton therapy center. Often, patients find the cost and extended travel required prohibitive and are not able to access this potentially life-saving treatment. When a patient is required to travel to another state for care, such as proton therapy, they risk losing the family, community, and provider support that often makes for a positive care experience and better patient outcomes. Traveling out of state for proton therapy also interferes with the ability to provide coordinated multidisciplinary care for patients, given their need to be elsewhere for radiation therapy, and considering the fact that many patients also should ideally receive concomitant systemic therapies such as chemotherapy. Receiving treatment out of state can be complicated and costly in terms of reimbursement with out-of-network authorization and charges applying to commercial plans. Connecticut Medicaid needs to negotiate rates with out-of-state providers for proton therapy. Incidentally, we are projecting that approximately 17% of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center's patients will be Medicaid beneficiaries. And when proton beam therapy is not geographically convenient, many studies have shown that historically underserved populations are less likely to be referred to out-of-state proton beam therapy due to a variety of complex social barriers. The economic, physical, and emotional hardships associated with out-of-state proton therapy impact pediatric patients and their families, as well as adult patients, all of whom endure similar hardships with travel and lodging for many weeks of therapy. These challenges can be particularly difficult for the elderly population, which is a significant and growing proportion of Connecticut's population and whose cancers benefit most from proton therapy. We have provided OHS with many letters of support for this proposal from providers and patients alike that support the need for proton therapy services for Connecticut residents closer to home. For example, the Director of Pediatric Neuro-oncology at Yale New Haven Children's Hospital, Dr. Asher Marks, and the Director of Pediatric Solid Tumors at Yale New Haven Children's Hospital, Dr. Farzana Pasankar, wrote that their departments are seeing significant increases in the number of children diagnosed with brain tumors and a wide range of solid tumors. These types of tumors in children often benefit from proton therapy. In addition, Dr. Eileen Gillan, the Director of Neuro-oncology at Connecticut Children's Medical Center, plans to provide a public statement of support for the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center later today. You will also hear from the family of a pediatric patient who will speak to the benefits of having this technology closer to home. The health systems have proposed a one-room proton therapy facility that can be supported entirely with volume from their own cancer programs, although the Cancer Proton Therapy Center will be available to all Connecticut residents and others in the Center will be available to all Connecticut residents and others in the region. The collaborative approach between Yale New Haven Health System and Hartford Healthcare to establish a proton therapy facility of modest size assures proper patient selection for proton radiotherapy, as well as sufficient patient volume to make the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center successful and mitigate financial risk. The Connecticut Proton Therapy Center is expected to provide proton therapy services to 208 patients in the first year of operation, ramping up to approximately 479 patients by year three. The capacity of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center's one treatment room is approximately in the high 400s of patients per year. Most importantly, our projections for the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center are conservative and based on actual patients rather than assumptions around the need for this service in the Connecticut population generally. Clinical experts from the health systems reviewed historic radiation therapy volumes from both systems, organized by tumor site, and estimated the percentage of each type of cancer that would be better treated by proton therapy versus conventional radiation therapy. This methodology was also applied to those types of cancers treated at hospitals other than Yale New Haven Health Services and Hartford Healthcare Hospitals based upon state tumor registry data. A vast majority of Connecticut proton therapy's volume, approximately 80%, is projected to originate from the health systems. And in actuality, Yale New Haven Health System and Hartford Healthcare could fill all of the Connecticut proton therapy's capacity without referrals from any outside provider. This makes our projections both reasonable and entirely achievable. Physicians working at the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will be credentialed to work within the Yale Medicine Physician Group practice with academic appointments to the Yale University School of Medicine. Physicists at the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will have academic appointments to the Yale School of Medicine as well. This will form the basis for an active clinical research program at the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center, giving patients access to cutting-edge proton radiation therapy, attracting the highest caliber professional staff, and potentially facilitating public and private insurance coverage for proton therapy as a matter of public policy for new and emerging medical technology. The Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will also be a teaching site for graduate medical education at the Yale School of Medicine, for trainees and students from the Yale School of Medicine, Yale New Haven Health System, and Hartford Healthcare, as well as other academic institutions and hospitals to be worked out in the future. The singular proton employment model will meaningfully merge the Hartford Healthcare and Yale School of Medicine faculties to be functioning as one collegial and non-competitive group. In addition to the Yale School of Medicine's rich history of research and educational accomplishments, Hartford Healthcare Institutions also serve as teaching hospitals and research institutions. The Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will be affiliated with the Smilow Cancer Hospital, a National Cancer Institute-designated comprehensive cancer center, and a member of the National Comprehensive Cancer Network. Association with the NCI and NCCN-designated cancer centers has been an indicator of long-term economic success for proton therapy facilities. In addition, a robust integration of clinical research framework at the Connecticut Proton Center entails best clinical practices and the physics accreditation with imaging and radiation oncology core, Yale New Haven Health System, and Hartford Healthcare. Physicians and clinical staff will proudly contribute to the growing body of evidence supporting the clinical efficacy of proton therapy, its tendency to reduce long-term side effects of radiation, and its ability to improve the quality of life for many cancer patients. We are hopeful that as this technology evolves and more research takes place, applications for proton therapy will increase, and this lifesaving treatment will be available to more patients for the effective treatment of more types of cancer. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak in support of this proposal to bring cutting-edge proton therapy technology to the state of Connecticut and, in doing so, advance cancer care for all Connecticut residents. Like my colleagues, I am eager to move forward with this project and am enthusiastic about the treatment and research possibilities that the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will bring. I therefore urge OHS to approve our CON application. Thank you so much for your time today. I have with me today colleagues from Hartford Healthcare, Yale New Haven Health System, and Proton International, and we are available to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you.
So our next two speakers are our remote speakers. So Chris Chandler is next. Chris, if you can unmute.
Good morning, everybody. There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. We can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. It's a great pleasure to join my colleagues in support of this application. And good morning, Attorney Mitchell and members of the staff. My name is Christopher Chandler. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Proton International, and I adopt my prefiled testimony. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the Certificate of Need application filed by Hartford Healthcare Corporation and Yale New Haven Health Services for the establishment of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center, including the acquisition of the IBA Proteus I proton therapy system. We are thrilled to be part of this collaboration, as has been described, between the state's largest health systems and providers of comprehensive cancer care, a very important and integral element to the success of the center, which I'll speak to. Prior to serving in my current role as CEO of Proton International, I've been involved in the development of several major proton therapy programs as Vice President and General Manager of IBA proton therapy. Early in my career, I also developed and launched and operated major proton facilities as a Senior Vice President of ProCure Treatment Centers. I have more than 35 years of experience in the healthcare industry and have personally participated in the sale, financing, opening, and/or operations of more than 10 proton therapy centers. I also am very pleased to be joined by colleagues at Proton International who have been involved in the development, design, installation, and opening of multiple proton centers. I'd like to tell you a bit more about Proton International today and who we are and how we have helped make this lifesaving technology available and make it a reality for patients in other states and also internationally. We focus very carefully on what we call clinically relevant and financially feasible solutions for proton therapy. And note, I mention clinically relevant first. That's the gatekeeper in our strategy for successful proton therapy centers. Several key variables need to be present, which we do have in this project. A high-quality and dedicated clinical partners who understand the need for proton therapy, the related clinical benefits, and how to most appropriately use proton therapy. An overall lower-cost solution compared to previous solutions in the industry. A long-term, low-cost financing solution, which becomes very important. And an equipment solution that is proven clinically relevant and reliable. And finally, a very clear identification of the patients, as Dr. Salner had indicated, that will benefit using this facility from our clinical partners. These are the most important variables if you look at financial feasibility. So that's really why we talk about clinically relevant and financially feasible facilities. All of these key variables and our experience-based approach combine to give confidence overall and ensure that we can rely on proper reimbursement from payers. And I'll speak more to that as we go along. We focus on treating clinically appropriate patients that will benefit, assure the physicians involved are well-established in the community, and understand the science, and the appropriate cases are selected. And finally, because we do not have to be unrealistic in the numbers of patients we put through the system, we're making sure that appropriately clinically relevant patients are being selected to be treated. This is a key factor in our experience.
Mr. Chandler, I think when you're looking at your written testimony, you can hear it in the microphone a little bit.
My apologies. My apologies.
The court reporter hears everything you're saying. And of course, I do too.
No problem. Thank you. I'll move it aside over here so that doesn't happen again. In our experience, we've really achieved satisfactory level of reimbursement based on applying proper clinical guidelines. And I think what's important and why our approach really is different is we don't create a financial plan in an Excel spreadsheet and then determine how to make that work. We work with excellent clinical providers, and our focus is truly on the treatment of the patient, using the appropriate science and clinical research to support all of our programs. And I'm confident, as you've heard this from the physicians already, you'll hear it again from additional testimony that will be involved here in a minute. We have a highly experienced team that specializes in development of proton therapy centers. We assist providers like the health systems involved in this project here today in developing business plans, evaluating the clinical programs, appropriate business assumptions, in order to provide a clear design, create a financing structure, select the technology, and be able to implement and open a successful proton therapy center, including training of staff. We've been involved in the development of three centers recently within the United States that are now operational. These three centers include the South Florida Proton Therapy Institute in Delray Beach, Florida, Proton International at the University of Alabama in Birmingham, Alabama, which is another NCI-designated academic cancer center, and William Beaumont Hospital in Detroit. In addition to these, Proton International has active centers in Europe and eight centers that are currently under development in the United States and abroad. So we have a tremendous amount of experience, I believe, in bringing these centers to fruition, which help instruct all of the centers that we work on. As Dr. Salner indicated, the clinical partnership has selected IBA Proteus I as the technology for the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. And this was based upon improvements in the technology, the experience of the vendor, the imaging capabilities of the technology, its capabilities in intensity modulation, or as Dr. Salner referred to as proton, as pencil beam scanning. And I think that Dr. Mendenhall will speak with her experience to that as well, because they use IBA technology at the University of Florida. And I think Proton International, we found that the cost effectiveness of proton therapy that others have spoken to today really comes from the effect of fewer side effects, the ability to implement the treatment modality, as Dr. Salner also mentioned, and Dr. Roberts, by improving the therapeutic ratio. Everybody understands that radiation to normal tissue is not a good thing. It causes significant side effects. And the ability to provide proton therapy in a cost-effective manner for appropriate patients allows us to reduce these side effects, reduce the overall cost to the patient, comorbidities to the patient, and also allows for additional concurrent therapies because there are fewer comorbidities, and these patients tend to tolerate the treatment better. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the program. I do have colleagues today with me from our building design, Peter Carbone, Senior Vice President for Design and Real Estate, Charles Yu, who's our Director of Finance and Operations, and Kristen Powers, who's involved in sales and marketing and project management. We're all available, as are our colleagues from institutions, to follow up with any questions you may have. And would like to just thank you very much for the opportunity to present today and to be a part of this project together with all of our colleagues. And we urge your adoption of the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So then our final speaker is Dr. Nancy Mendenhall. Nancy can unmute. She'll come up.
Good morning, Attorney Mitchell and members of the OHS staff. My name is Nancy Price Mendenhall, and I'm a physician and currently the Medical Director of the University of Florida Health Proton Therapy Institute. I adopt my prefiled testimony. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of the Certificate of Need application filed by Yale New Haven Health Services and Hartford Healthcare Corporation to establish the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. As a physician with many years of practice, over 35, proton therapy has been the most exciting development that I've seen in my career. I think I can provide some perspective on this therapy and the technology and how the proposal you're facing can enhance the provision of excellent advanced care in the state of Connecticut. Prior to becoming Medical Director at the UFH Proton Therapy Institute, I was a practicing radiation oncologist since 1984 at the University of Florida and served as the Department Chair for 13 years until 2006, and was involved in the conception of the proton therapy project at UF. And when it came to fruition in 2006, I stepped down as Department Chair because I felt like the more important role I could play was in bringing on this new technology for the state of Florida. Proton therapy provides us, as radiation oncologists, with the ability to really do a better job of treatment. We can minimize radiation exposure to normal tissues. And if we can do this, that means less in the way of side effects and complications. And if we can lessen side effects and complications, we can escalate radiation doses and get higher cure rates. We can shorten treatment courses and provide more convenient, less costly treatments, while all at the same time reducing complications and improving quality of life. Over the course of my service as Medical Director here at the Proton Center since 2006, I've been gratified to see this promise come to realization. We opened in 2006. We were considered an early adopter, fifth in the country, first in the southeast. We have a 98,000-square-foot facility, which includes conventional radiation and three gantry-based treatment rooms, as well as a fixed room for delivery of treatments to eye cancer patients. We also house dosimetry simulation and administrative space in a clinic. It's a three-story facility comprised of high-density concrete walls that protect all patients and people from potential exposure. Each of the gantries is 200,000 pounds, and we have three of them. The cyclotron is 440,000 pounds. Some of the walls are 18 feet thick. We have had an extremely successful relationship with our vendor, IBA Ion Beam Applications out of Belgium. And IBA is considered a worldwide leader. They've sold and operated more proton therapy facilities than any other vendor in the world. And I believe they are the vendor that you're working with for Connecticut. So based on my relationship, I can assure you that for us, they've been an excellent partner, very reliable, very dedicated. Since opening, we've had to undergo a number of technology upgrades because we were an early adopter, and we've had excellent support. We've had improved imaging guidance provided by IBA, safer floor designs around the treatment couch, and better proton delivery modes. We've upgraded from double scattering, for example, to pencil beam scanning, as Dr. Roberts had mentioned. And because we've been at capacity since, even with our four treatment rooms, since shortly after opening, we decided to expand our capacity and improve our technology by adding the Proteus I in 2016. And this is the piece of equipment that you're considering at this time. This is the state-of-the-art application of proton beam scanning, pencil beam scanning. It provides more conformity of the high radiation dose to the target volume and therefore more sparing of normal tissues. And it's also very efficient. It provides a faster delivery. And it's also very efficient. It provides a faster delivery of the treatment, which is important for many different reasons beyond simply operations. So I can endorse your choice of technology and your choice of partner. I would say that the affiliation between the proton facility and the University of Florida Health Systems with local hospitals and physicians in Jacksonville has greatly contributed to the operational success of the facility. I think that the collaboration that's been described this morning between Yale New Haven and Hartford Healthcare is excellent. You want to provide maximum access to this technology, to a maximum number of patients. And I think this is exactly the kind of model that you need to guarantee operational success. We have now, at UFHPTI, treated about 9,000 patients since 2006. And this includes almost 2,000 pediatric patients, very difficult patients who've come to us from all over the world. We've had patients from all 50 states. The major types of cancers that we've treated besides pediatrics include breast cancer, central nervous system brain tumors, head and neck cancers, prostate cancer, lung cancer, esophageal cancers, liver cancers, mediastinal lymphomas, and a smattering of some others as well. About 40% of our patients are Medicare beneficiaries. And we have a philosophy of being, wanting to promote accessible care to all people. We avoid any disparity of care for lower socioeconomic groups and take pride in being accessible for all ethnic and racial backgrounds as well. I would say that our success has been impacted by the founding vision that we would have a strong clinical research program concurrent with the clinical activities. 98% of our patients have been enrolled in an outcome tracking protocol and about 40% have participated in clinical trials. We've been able to generate over 100 peer-reviewed articles that deal with dosimetric comparisons, treatment outcomes, technical delivery issues. And I think this has helped inform the progress of the field and it certainly made us aware of outcomes, made us able to give a better informed consent to our patients and enabled us to identify areas where we need to make improvements. As a person who's been committed for many, many years to clinical research as well as clinical care and improving outcomes in patients, I believe that proton therapy will be viewed as the most cost-effective radiation alternative as time goes on and more data is generated. Fewer side effects means lower cost care for complications. Fewer recurrences means lower cost for the care of recurrent disease. And better quality of life means a happier, more productive population of cancer survivors. I believe proton therapy will produce all of these outcomes. With respect to financial viability, I would say that it has been a challenge for many centers across the country. We've been very successful financially. We had no major grants. All of our financing came through borrowed money and we've been able to make advance payments. And we're regarded as being highly successful by our board and by the university. I think that the model that you've adopted will ensure operational success for your facility as well. I think it might be less challenging, actually, than it was for us with filling four vaults. But you have adequate patients and you have an excellent design. So from my vantage point, I think you're poised for success. I think the facility is well-scaled and you'll have plenty of patients and you'll be able to choose the most appropriate patients who will benefit the most. I think having both of the largest healthcare systems involved is an excellent start. And I think my understanding is that you're situated to be able to provide anesthesia for your pediatric patients. That's very, very important. And one of the things I think is most important, I've actually worked with Dr. Roberts for, I don't even know how many years now. We've been involved in research studies in pediatric oncology for many, many years. I think this commitment to the clinical research is really important. This is what will define the future of proton therapy and make it grow. It's also what will ensure the best outcomes for your patients. So I commend you on that. And then finally, I don't think I've said this yet. I have, we've worked with IBA, so I believe they're a great partner. I have to say that Chris Chandler was involved from the outset in our project. I don't think we would have gotten the project done without Chris's involvement. And I think you just could not have a better partner. Thank you so much for the time and the opportunity for me to speak in support of your project. I'm excited about it. I hope to welcome you to this field. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have now or later.
Thank you, Dr. Mendenhall. So that concludes our presentation.
Thank you. I just wanted to double check how many did we have with Dr. Mendenhall? Because I understood that she has other obligations.
I believe, Dr. Mendenhall, you're available until 1 o'clock, correct? Or just before 1?
Yes, with a short break.
I just wanted to have a few moments to talk to my colleagues about our questions. Is there anybody that you wanted to have give public comment before OHS asks their question?
No, I think everyone we've spoken with is going to participate this afternoon.
Got it. Okay, so we are going to go off the record until about 11:35. Does that sound okay?
Perfect.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Back on the record at 11:35.
All right, so we are back on the record. OHS is going to begin with their questions for the applicants. I just want to ask anyone who might testify, who has not been sworn in. When you state your name, just indicate that you haven't been sworn in and I will swear you in. Going to ask Lindsay to go ahead and start with our questions. Lindsay, before you start, just make sure that you indicate the subject matter for each question.
The first question is this background information. What is the current legal status of the relationship between the applicants and Proton International?
Yes, this is Art Lemay. And I can say that we have a letter of understanding under development and we've been working towards the completion of a joint venture relationship. It is not final yet. We're waiting for the CON approval to proceed.
I can just, this is Jen Fusco, just to clarify, Lindsay. So the letter of intent has been signed and we did submit a copy of that with one of our completeness submissions, which outlines the basic parameters of the relationship. But the definitive agreements typically don't get negotiated and signed until after a CON is approved, just given the amount of time it takes to do that. So that's where we are.
Thanks.
The next question is in reference to access to services within the region. Throughout the application and the prefiled testimony, it's emphasized that access for Connecticut patients will be improved by having a proton therapy center in Connecticut. Indicate how many patients within each of the applicant's systems have been referred for proton beam therapy in the last three fiscal years, possible?
Hi, this is Andrew Salner responding. We don't really track that number of patients who are referred to other centers, so I can't give you a precise answer. We do track the pediatric patients who are sent to other centers. And we attempted to reach out to all of our radiation oncologists and referring physicians to try and get a more quantitative idea about how many patients had been referred over the last number of years. And we did not come up with a credible number. So I'm sorry to say we can't really answer that question with as much precision as you would like.
Doctor, you said that you had the number of pediatric referrals, though? Did you have that information to share?
I think that was shared in the application, was it not?
No, I don't think we shared a number of patients.
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can get it for you, Brian.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I just want to interject one other point. And Attorney Fusco, you know, if you have any objections to this, let me know. We could possibly look at some data through the All Payer Claims Database. I just wanted to take official notice of that and our other databases to determine who's actually gone outside of the state for this type of service. Are you amenable to that if we were able to present it to you so that you could comment on it?
Yeah, I mean, I think we would need it presented to us in a way that we understand sort of the universe of what's in the All Payer Claims Database. Like, my understanding is that it doesn't capture a majority of the claims. So those things might be underrepresented, but as long as we could see the data and understood the parameters, we could, I think we could comment on it. And I think too, just to, and you know, we could comment to note that in terms of trying to put together those numbers, an important thing to note is that there are plenty of patients that just forego the therapy altogether, right? So these would be numbers of people who actually decided they wanted the therapy and went out of state, you know, versus those who just decided to have conventional radiation. But you know, we'd be happy to look at them if we understand.
This is Dr. Roberts. Sorry to have a question back to you. Is this All Payers Database something that OHS has access to?
Yes.
That's great. That's a great resource. Yeah, I can tell you that we have outcomes researchers at the Yale Cancer Center. And we've had some limited, you know, access to private payer claims data sets. But we were restricted from using that to look at this very question because it's considered proprietary. And but we'd love to see that information also.
Yeah, so there are some challenges with the APCD, I will admit. But if there is a way that, you know, we could pull the data and also, you know, as Attorney Fusco said, discuss some of the parameters and come to an agreement about that, we may be able to do that. I just wanted to throw it out there as a possibility.
Absolutely. We appreciate that. Thank you, Attorney Mitchell.
All right, so Lindsay, you can proceed.
The next two questions also both relate to access to services within the region. So question three is on page eight of his prefiled testimony. Dr. Salner states, "It is likely, as we work together, that we will be able to embrace the referral process from non-system sites." Can you explain what that means and explain what the referral process would look like?
Sure. This is Andrew Salner speaking. We, Connecticut is a relatively small state and there are relatively small number of radiation oncologists who practice in the state. And Dr. Roberts and I know everybody, more or less, in the state quite well. And we have a very good collegial relationship with that group of radiation oncologists. We currently work with them on selected patients who may need to come to one of our centers, for example, for a specialized treatment. And we would absolutely welcome referrals to the Proton Center of appropriate patients from these other sites. In contrast to other centers around the country that have actually placed linear accelerators that deliver photon therapy in proton centers so that for those patients who don't, aren't considered a good proton therapy candidate, that center could treat them on a linear accelerator with photon treatment. We've chosen not to do so. There, we felt no reason, there would be no reason to try and compete with all of our radiation oncologists around the state who do a great job at treating patients with photon therapy. And in addition, all patients in Connecticut are relatively close to a really good photon treatment center. And so specifically, if we get referred a patient from a colleague whose tumor is, doesn't, there's not good evidence that the treatment with protons would be advantageous, we would be very anxious to refer the patient back to the referring radiation oncologist for photon treatment. Our job is to really see patients who we think are good candidates for proton therapy and to provide excellent care for them in the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center and then refer them back to their local community.
Thank you. Question four is, according to Ms. Hanley on page three of her prefiled testimony, she states, "The CPTC will be available to all Connecticut residents through provider and self-referral." Can you please describe how the self-referral process works?
That's probably better addressed by Andy V. Do you want to talk about it again?
This is Andrew Salner. If I may, take the first step in answering your good question. Self-referral to proton therapy centers around the country has certainly occurred where patients have heard about the new technology, they're excited about it. They've been diagnosed with cancer. They wonder if that treatment might be appropriate for them. And rather than having, seeing a radiation oncologist locally or having their physician refer them, they make a phone call themselves to the proton therapy center to be evaluated. We would have no problem in seeing patients who are self-referred, as we do now for cancer patients who come to us sometimes for a second opinion perhaps, or perhaps because they have had a relationship or a family member has had a relationship with one of our centers and wants to come and see us for a consultation. We would have no problem in seeing patients who are self-referred. Obviously, we would get all the pertinent clinical information about the patient, imaging and pathology. And we would see them in consultation as we would routinely at one of our cancer centers now. We would talk to their physician team because there's a lot of nuances in the care of these patients and we would want to make sure that we understand what their clinical situation is and would be happy to consider treating them if it's appropriate.
Yeah, I cannot, Dr. Roberts, I agree with those comments. You know, we would certainly welcome self-referrals and it would be part of, you know, our professional practice to give an independent evaluation as to how their cancer ought to be treated and if there is a place for proton radiotherapy and educate that patient as to what their options are and the need for collaboration with their other established physicians.
I have nothing to add. I think that's exactly the response. Thank you.
Follow-up question. How often does that occur, that someone will come and request a specific treatment versus having their doctor suggest it? It's kind of different than getting like a second opinion when you're going out to seek a...
Yeah, when there's a new technology, a new exciting treatment option, you know, I think, you know, we're aware that we're likely going to see a good number of patients seeking out opinions about proton radiotherapy. And we're prepared to help those patients through their journey and make sure that they have appropriate treatment. But just because they're coming from... But just because they're coming for protons doesn't mean they're going to get proton radiotherapy. You know, we want all the decision-making to be professional and based on scientific evidence.
There had been, I would add, this is Andrew Salmer, there had been a sort of a large number of patients when protons really became more accessible nationally. There was sort of some evidence to suggest that it may have some benefits, particularly in prostate cancer. And there were publications in the lay literature, for example, and I believe Time Magazine, about the potential benefits of proton therapy. And there was a fairly large number of men with prostate cancer newly diagnosed who decided to self-refer just to learn more about it and see if their situation was amenable to proton therapy. So I agree with Dr. Roberts. I think when there's a new technology that promises a better result, whether that's a higher cure rate or fewer side effects or a combination of the two, patients are interested in pursuing that. And through their own research and discussion with their peers and colleagues, they may know more about it than their current physician in terms of what the offerings might be. And so I think self-referral is a part of it. It's probably going to be a relatively small part, but I think it's a part of it just the same.
Thank you. All right, so the next question is, actually regards Dr. Mendenhall's prefiled testimony. It's on page one of her prefiled testimony, the first page. And basically, in her prefiled testimony, she states that proton therapy is an emerging cancer treatment modality. And so the question is kind of two parts. And the first part is, what do you mean when you say it is emerging? And then the second part is, how does this statement relate to the effectiveness of proton beam therapy?
Okay, so what I meant by emerging is that there's a compelling rationale for it. It makes a tremendous amount of sense when we, as radiation oncologists, look at the treatment plans that we can generate with proton therapy in comparison to the treatment plans that we have used and are using that are based on photon therapy. So we can see that there's going to be a whole lot less radiation dose to normal tissues. And so what I meant by emerging is that it takes time for us to prove that the clinical outcomes are going to be what we think they're going to be based on seeing the treatment plans. And so we now have experiences that go back as far as 1990 from the first institution that had a clinically dedicated proton facility. So we now have data from that institution on patients that were treated quite a long time ago. At my own institution, we now have data for a number of tumor sites where patients are out more than 10 years. And so we want to see, we want to follow those patients and find out that, in fact, they have lower complication rates than what we've seen with x-rays and then what's reported in the literature. And so what I meant by emerging is that the data is emerging. And so now we know for sure that the children have fewer neurocognitive sequelae from proton therapy than what they have with conventional radiation. We now know for sure that there's a very significant reduction in second malignancies with proton therapy. Overall, a threefold reduction across all disease sites, all ages, all genders. And in some settings, for example, prostate cancer, that reduction in second malignancies at five years is a fivefold reduction. Now, some of the other benefits are more subtle, harder to measure, but there are ongoing studies. Every proton center in the U.S. is involved in gathering and analyzing data, either within their institution or in a cooperative group setting. There are seven or eight ongoing comparative trials where patients are either put into cohorts or they're randomized to get proton therapy or conventional radiation. And what we want to do in these studies is confirm the degree of benefit when the treatment is applied over a very large number of patients and institutions. All this data is emerging, and I think it will continue to develop. And what we're seeing is increasing differences in outcomes with time. More and more improvements emerge the longer we follow the patients.
Can I just ask a follow-up, Dr. Mendenhall? So you said you've been doing it since 1990. Has, within the proton beam therapy, have the techniques and efficiency of the delivery of it improved? And it's been going on for a while now, since 1990? Has there been a progression?
Absolutely. And so there, so the first clinically dedicated proton therapy facility opened in 1990 at Loma Linda. There had been some proton therapy delivered with research equipment, physics research equipment at Massachusetts General and in a few other institutions. And so what we know from those experiences are that there was a significant reduction in second malignancy. We know from the Loma Linda experiences where there was actually a clinically dedicated facility and a gantry that could rotate around patients so that they could treat different kinds of cancers. We know that those outcomes, in terms of disease control and toxicity, appear to be better than the outcomes that were contemporaneously being reported with conventional radiation. In order to prove that the differences you're observing with a single institution report are real, you want to confirm them. You want to see that other institutions can replicate those findings and that the overall population, as outcomes manifested in large databases like the National Cancer Database, you want to see that that data matches the single institution data that is being generated. That takes a lot of facilities, operational, and a lot of patience. And so I mentioned that UF was the fifth in 2006. And so we came on board same time as MD Anderson Cancer Center in Houston. And the third facility is the only facility I know of that's actually closed. So there were only two facilities, Master and Loma Linda, before 2006. And I think several people have mentioned that there's now three times as many facilities. In 2010, there were probably about 10 facilities. It takes a number of facilities to treat enough patients of the same kind that we can see that those clinical outcomes are living up to what we predicted they would be based on the radiation dosimetry, the treatment plans. I hope that helps. I'm not sure if it...
Yeah, definitely. I was also thinking, like, is the pencil beam sort of technique, is that something newer to the whole proton therapy?
Yes, and so pencil beam is newer. And it, I think it was first utilized in Switzerland at the Paul Scheer Institute. And they are, excuse me, I forget exactly when they came on board. Probably sometime after 2000. And they have reported their pencil beam outcomes in several malignancies, base of skull tumors, for example. And those outcomes look to be excellent. Now, in the U.S., it's taken a little bit longer to bring that technology onboard. I believe for us at UFPTI, we got it in 2017. And so we don't feel like we have enough data yet to say for sure that the clinical outcomes are going to match the dosimetry outcomes. But the dosimetry outcomes certainly look better. And there's every reason to believe that the outcomes will be better with PBS. We have to wait, you know, we have to wait to confirm. There's no reason to think they won't be.
Thank you. So yeah, you need more data.
It's always that way.
Yes, yeah. Thank you very much, doctor.
Can you just define for me the term, I believe that you said cognitive, is it sequelae? Is that what you said?
I did. And what I meant by that was when we think about how a child's brain functions, the neuro, the pediatric neurologist measure brain function with a bunch of parameters. The overall term is IQ, but the IQ is, there are a number of different types of processing and memory functions. And so when those functions are looked at after proton therapy, there's much less of a negative impact on the child's neurocognitive function. And when I say neurocognitive, I mean the whole global IQ, memory, processing, all of that. We collaborated with St. Jude Research Center before they had a proton facility. So they began to send us their patients for proton therapy sometime probably around, I'm guessing it was maybe 2009 or '10. And it took them five or six years before they were able to get a proton facility themselves. All of the children that we treated for them were enrolled on protocols. And the investigators at St. Jude compared the outcomes of those children that we treated with protons with the outcomes of the children they treated with conventional radiation. And the neurocognitive outcomes were better after proton therapy. So their IQ was better. They had less of a negative impact from radiation.
I was listening to your, you give your prefiled testimony, and you said that, I believe since it's 2006, that you treated 9,000 patients with this type of therapy. The question that I have for you is, this is in Florida, correct?
It is Florida. Yes, it's Jacksonville. It's part of the University of Florida. We have two campuses, one in Gainesville, one in Jacksonville.
Okay, are there any other proton therapy centers in Florida?
There are now. So I may forget the dates exactly. We opened in 2006. There is a one-room facility that opened in Jacksonville in the community. And I think, I don't know, I don't remember the date exactly. I'm going to guess, and please don't hold me to this, but I'm going to guess it was around 2014 or something like that. Also, there's a one-room facility in Orlando. And recently, a one-room facility opened in Delray Beach. I believe Mr. Chandler is involved with that facility. And then finally, there's another very large program located at Miami Baptist Cancer Institute. And I believe they have five treatment rooms. So right now, we have one, two, three, four, five, I get five proton facilities in Florida. Sometime in the future, there will be a sixth. Mayo Clinic will put one in Jacksonville. I believe that's maybe scheduled for 2014.
Okay. To the best of your knowledge, are all of these programs, are they solvent?
When you say solid, do you mean operationally?
Solvent.
Oh, solvent, okay. To my knowledge, they all are. To my knowledge, they're all treating at capacity, as far as I know. I've certainly not heard anything to the contrary. And I'm aware that a couple of them are already thinking about adding, a couple of the small one-room programs are thinking about adding a second treatment room. So there's not been a problem with capacity. And I will say that COVID has had an impact on all of radiation oncology. We think it's temporary. And everyone's had a little bit of a drop, but, you know, it's nothing major.
Okay. All right, the next question is actually for you as well. And it relates to, let's see, page seven of your prefiled testimony. You basically stated, "In our complementary field of proton therapy, we are looking for improved quality of life outcomes with equal or better cure rates to conventional x-ray therapy." And then on page nine, you said that the biggest hallmark of future success is that this program, CPTC, is structured to strongly support clinical research. So I have a number of questions for you with regard to those two statements. The first is, can you define what you mean by complementary field of proton therapy?
Actually, I don't have the context in which I said that, so I'm not sure exactly what I meant. I probably meant that there are some patients that we think are very, very well-treated with conventional photon-based radiation. So we don't use proton therapy for every patient that we see. And sometimes we think, and this isn't necessarily an issue of insurance coverage. Sometimes we think the better choice of treatment is actually x-rays. So I'll give you an example. If we have a patient with very early breast cancer, so the only thing that needs to be treated is the breast. We don't need to treat any lymph nodes. It's often the case that we can treat the breast with conventional radiation and have almost no radiation at all to the lung or to the heart. And right now, with the current technology, even with pencil beam scanning, the skin dose with conventional radiation is lower than the skin dose with proton therapy. So there's really no way for us to have a better outcome with protons. So we use a lot of proton therapy in breast cancer, but it's for women who need to have the regional lymph nodes treated or in whom our conventional radiation plan would expose a lot of heart or lung to radiation. So if we don't see a benefit for using proton therapy, we recommend conventional radiation. And sometimes it's because the results might be equivalent, but in the case of breast cancer, we think the cosmetic outcome will be better with x-rays. So if that's the situation, then proton therapy would be complementary in that it would complement the full scale of radiation technology that would best, you know, serve the patient.
Have we reached the standard that you described where you state that... Um, have we reached the standard that you described where you state that, that you're looking for improved quality of life outcomes with equal or better cure rates to conventional X-ray therapy?
So when I say, uh, quality of life outcomes, I'm referring very specifically to patient-reported quality of life outcomes in contrast to physician-reported toxicity or side effects. So when we think about how a patient, the success of a treatment, we're gonna measure disease control, that's a very important thing. We're gonna measure all the toxicity that the physician or clinical team records in terms of side effects and the kinds of interventions that we use for those side effects. So, for example, uh, maybe we have to, uh, give some pain medication. Or maybe we have to give some medication to help with the urinary function or with swallowing function or something like that. So that would be an intervention, and I would record that and I would grade that as a certain level of toxicity based on standard, um, NCI-developed criteria for measuring the severity of a side effect and an intervention. So that would be my view of the patient's outcome from a toxicity and side effect perspective. The patient, though, has a different perspective on things. So let's say, for example, I'm going to switch to prostate cancer because I work in that right now and I'm involved in, in a trial where we're looking simultaneously at quality of life and toxicity and disease control. So, um, let's say that with my conventional radiation, my photon-based radiation, I do the very best job I can, but it's often the case that I'm gonna expose most of the rectum that's behind the prostate to some low to moderate dust radiation. The side effect, uh, would be bowel urgency and frequency. The patient would need to, uh, go to the bathroom to evacuate frequently and wouldn't have a lot of time to do that. So there would be increased frequency and urgency. Now, if that's really bad, uh, it could be as severe as incontinence. And that, uh, that would have a major impact on that patient's quality of life. Now, there's no intervention for that. There's nothing I can do to solve that problem. And so because there's no intervention, there's not really, uh, a cost impact. It's not coded as a severe side effect because I don't have an intervention that can be graded. I might record that as very minor. The patient might see that as a very major impact on quality of life. So it's very important that we gather patient-reported quality of life functional data as well as the physician-reported data. Now, on the other hand, uh, let's say, uh, that that patient had some temporary rectal bleeding from the radiation that I, I gave him. And I thought that it was significant enough that I did something about it. I gave, I gave him suppositories, I did a formalin application, maybe I did a coagulation or something. Um, it might go down, um, as a grade three toxicity. But once I did that, that symptom would be over and gone. And so if you ask a patient what their quality of life was, they might say it's perfect. I might have recorded a grade three toxicity. So these patient-reported quality of life outcomes are our ultimate goal. But for cost of care and, uh, full recording, we also report toxicity in interventions, physician-reported assessments. Does that help?
Um, it does, but let me just, I just wanna probe just a little bit more because you, you did talk about improved quality of life outcomes for patients. But you also talk about with, you know, with equal or better cure rates, um, to conventional X-ray therapy. And so I guess my question would be that whether you feel that proton therapy offers equal or better cure rates currently, um, when compared to conventional X-ray therapy?
I absolutely do. Um, you know, so, um, at, at the risk of perhaps getting too much in the weeds, um, when we, um, give a certain amount of dose with X-rays, uh, and we give exactly the same dose with protons, we believe we're getting a little more of an impact with the protons. And so it may turn out to be, in fact, we hypothesize, hypothesized this. It's the subject of, it's one of the endpoints of a major study right now. We've hypothesized that we are gonna see improved disease control. Same dose with protons compared to photons. Now, we don't know that because you, yet, because you need a head-to-head trial to prove, to prove it. But we have a fair amount of benchmark data to suggest that it may happen. There's certainly no reason to think that it won't be at least equivalent, but it may actually be a little bit better. And the other piece of this is that because we're less worried about side effects, we think that we're gonna be able to more safely dose escalate with protons and give higher doses, dose intensify, give the dose in a shorter period of time because we don't have to worry quite as much about the normal tissues. Much of the protraction, the stretching out of radiation courses over a period of six or seven or eight weeks, it's because we're trying to protect normal tissues. And if we don't have to worry so much about them, we can shorten that course. One impact of shortening the course is that it costs less. That's a nice thing. It's less inconvenient for the patient. That's a really nice thing. But another impact may be that it will be more effective on the tumor. We have a lot of reason to think that might be the case. So there are several ways that we may actually achieve improved disease control with protons. One is, we think they're biologically more effective. And we have a fair amount of data that suggests that. Two, we may be able to dose escalate. Three, we may be able to dose intensify, shorten the course. So we're confident, absolutely confident that the disease control rates will be at least equivalent. But we think they're actually gonna be better with protons.
So is this, are you in the process of establishing this evidence to show that yes, equal or better cure rates? Or is this something that's already been proven?
No, it's, it has not already been proven. To prove something, you need a head-to-head comparative trial. And for high credibility, that needs to be large-scale. It needs to have a lot of institutions involved, applying, you know, the competing treatments uh, in different settings. It needs to be based on more than single-institution data. And so, uh, I was asked earlier about the early data. The early data coming out of Omalinda, uh, suggested not only less toxicity, but also better disease control. If we look back at it, the disease control in the tumor sites that were being studied and reported appeared to be significantly better than disease control rates that were being reported contemporaneously with photons. But I, I think no one at that point in time, uh, had an explanation for why that might be. We've seen exactly the same thing at UF. We've seen disease control rates, for example, in prostate cancer that appear to be 10 to 15% better than what our most respected colleagues, our most respected colleagues are reporting with conventional radiation. So, uh, because the numbers of patients involved are large, it's, it's really, um, begged the question. And the radiation biologists have been working very hard on this for the last five or six years. And they now have some potential explanations for why we might actually indeed see higher disease control rates with protons than photons. It isn't proven at this point, but it is one of the hypotheses in, um, in the compare study, which I'm involved in, where we're comparing the outcomes of 1,500 men treated with IMRT, conventional radiation for prostate cancer versus 1,500 men being treated with proton therapy for prostate cancer.
Head-to-head trial, is that what you mean when you say head-to-head?
Yes, it's, it's a large-scale trial funded by, in this case, the Patient-Centered Outcomes Research Institute. And there are 51 institutions involved with it. And so, um, you know, it remains, you know, well, it'll take us five or six years to determine whether this is the case or not. But, uh, certainly, there was enough suggestive data that the hypothesis was accepted by a federal funding agency and deemed, um, worthy to be tested in a prospective comparative trial.
In, in your opinion, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding correctly. In your opinion is, are these trials as part of kind of large, a larger scale, I guess, as part of larger scale, like, uh, research programs? Are they part of just coming to that determination about proton therapy being, um, you know, having an equal or better cure rate when it's compared to conventional X-ray therapy?
I think, um, I, I, I think I'm not absolutely sure what the question is, but, you know, I think that as physicians, there are certain times where we have enough equipoise that we want to do a head-to-head comparative study. There are other times where we can see on paper that the differences are so drastic that we don't think it's ethical to do a head-to-head comparative study. I think it's totally ethical to do a head-to-head comparative study in prostate cancer. The reason is that we have excellent outcomes with conventional radiation. And so if we prove that the outcomes are better with proton therapy, those differences will still be relatively small. They'll be small enough that I feel very comfortable saying to a patient I'm treating with X-rays, your outcomes are gonna be excellent. If I were dealing with a child with a brain tumor, I wouldn't dream of asking the parents to have that child randomized between conventional radiation and proton therapy because I know from the dosimetry data and now the clinical data from St. Jude that that child treated with X-rays would have an inferior neurocognitive outcome. I don't have to do that trial. I don't think it would be ethical. So, um, I think that in the disease sites where we think the differences are small, it's ethical and appropriate to have these large sales, scale comparative studies, but not in all areas. I hope that helps.
So let me just, I, I think I, uh, this question might be best answered by Dr. Solner. And I just wanna just, um, make sure that I'm clear. Is, is clinical research a large part of this application so that we can confirm that, in fact, proton therapy is equal or better um, to cure rates that might be, might be made through conventional X-ray therapy? Or is, is proton therapy currently a viable option for the treatment or cure of certain cancers? I think that's part of the thing that we wanna make sure that we understand.
Yeah. Uh, this is Dr. Ken Roberts. I'll answer this. Um, there are certain clinical situations, cancer situations, where we think proton radiotherapy is the standard of care.
Yep.
Okay. Um, there are other instances where, uh, there's a gray zone for an individual patient and we have to do a comparison of what X-rays are capable of doing versus protons. And then, um, make a judgment as to how well we're going to spare radiation dust in normal tissues to decide that protons are better. And then there are instances where, um, uh, there's such uncertainty, uh, but there's the potential benefit of proton radiotherapy that we want to participate in clinical trials. Um, and, and, uh, clinical trials will be an important component of our mission at the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. But, uh, but, but there's, there are enough patients who benefit from protons just as a standard of care, um, that, uh, that'll be a predominant, um, clinical, um, interaction of patients to, to be able to offer this therapy, given where the science is now, uh, for proton radiotherapy. So I hope that helps.
Um, are you able to enumerate the types of cancer for which proton therapy is the standard of care?
Um, yeah, well, well, pediatrics is pretty clear. Not all pediatric, uh, answers need protons, but a good number of them, a good number of the solid tumors. The, uh, but that's a small, uh, proportion, uh, in epidemiologic terms of the types of patients we'll be seeing. Brain, many brain tumors, not all, but many, base of skull tumors. Um, I'm just anatomically going from head to toe. You know, certain head and neck cancer patients, uh, have a benefit. Some of the studies have suggested, you know, 30% maybe of head and neck cancer patients uh, will have a benefit. And, you know, the, those that have tumors that are close to the base of skull, you know, near brain tissues, uh, eye, that affect eye function. Um, or those tumors that are more lateralized where, um, you know, protons just do a better job of reducing dose to the midline, critical central structures like, um, swallowing, taste, saliva function. So, um, you know, there are certain lung cancer patients that there's, you know, that's a very heterogeneous group of patients, but certain of them have a benefit. Um, esophagus patients, um, you know, there's, there's been some very gratifying work recently of some large trials showing that because you're able to reduce side of, the, the radiation dose to heart and lung when treating esophagus, that that translates into lower side effects uh, when treating these complex patients who often will get chemotherapy with radiation and a cohort will even get surgery. And so the surgical complications, um, are reduced when proton is part of the combined modality therapy. Um, there are certain liver cancers, uh, that we can't treat with protons, with systematological X-rays. Uh, but with protons, because you can spare some of the uninvolved liver, you suddenly have a curative modality relative to the other types of treatments that might be available, um, with embolization procedures or surgery. So, so there's a cohort of patients with liver cancers who suddenly we have curative treatments with, uh, with the use of proton radiotherapy. The, um, you know, there, there are certain circumstances where other gastrointestinal tumors are better treated with protons because of the ability to spare dose to normal tissues. Um, for instance, a tumor problem in a young woman where you wanna preserve reproductive function. Um, you know, in that scenario broadly, you know, because we can reduce dose to the, you know, the ovaries and uterus, uh, we can preserve that, the critical part of life for that patient, uh, going forward. There are sarcomas, um, that are better treated with protons because of the ability to dose escalate, particularly those that aren't. because of the ability to dose escalate, particularly those that aren't resectable by surgeons. And so I don't know, that's sort of a highlight of trying to answer that question. You know, cancers are such, it's a heterogeneous group of diseases to begin with. Within a particular disease site, there's heterogeneity. And so oftentimes, we're confronted with trying to sort out for a particular patient, given that distribution of disease, their anatomy. To what degree does protons reduce dose to critical normal tissues and will be a benefit? So.
Attorney Mitchell, this is Andrew Solner. If I can just add in to complement what my colleague just said. The other group of patients, we think, who seem to be benefiting now selectively from proton therapy are those patients who've had prior radiation therapy and who seem to have localized cancer that hasn't spread anywhere else in the body. But they're not candidates for having their recurrent cancer removed. And it is possible with protons many times to actually re-treat them with radiation and give a very limited dose of radiation just for the tumor. Whereas if we use photon radiation, the potential risk of reradiation is that the surrounding normal tissue would get such a high dose that that tissue, that we would cause tissue necrosis or death of that tissue, which frequently is a very bad thing for the patient. So we've seen, one of the groups of patients that we've referred, for example, for proton radiation, are patients with certain kinds of head and neck cancers who have occurred in the head and neck, but don't have any evidence of disease anywhere else in their body. And we've seen some really good results of patients who've come back to us after being treated with protons, who seem to have good control of the tumor after their proton therapy. I would also just make a comment about clinical research, because I think you were getting at sort of, you know, are we trying to prove that it's good or do we already know that it's good? And I think it's both, you know? I think we already know that it's very good for many tumor sites. But if you think about the notion that there are thousands of conventional radiation therapy centers throughout the country, some of which, like our centers, participate in clinical research, there's only 30 some centers that do proton therapy. So virtually every proton center has to make that commitment to do some research to generate information, not only about tumor control, but about quality of life, as Dr. Mendenhall so beautifully pointed out. You know, not only our perceptions, but the patient's perception about their quality of life. Because it's only through understanding that data that we'll ultimately be able to understand how best to take care of patients and advance the field. So I think it's incumbent upon proton centers to participate in research. And we certainly have a commitment to it. Even in patients who where we already know it's a better treatment and we're treating them in a quote "standard" proton treatment, we may want to understand more about their side effects. Or we may want to understand more about their long-term outcomes. And we need to participate in research accordingly.
Yeah, yeah. And just for completeness, I'd be very remiss if I didn't mention a group of patients that actually I spent a lot of my career involved with clinical trials. It's always Dr. Mendenhall. But, you know, young, not just pediatric patients, but young adults with lymphoma problems. You know, we, ages ago, had a concept, we don't have to treat these folks with very high doses of radiation. But in fact, decades of follow-up have shown that even moderate or low doses of radiation given to large volumes of the body end up producing significant problems with heart disease, secondary malignancies. And, you know, we have changed how we treat those patients by using more chemotherapy, less radiation. But protons has also been an evolving modality to help with reducing the long-term side effects for adolescents and young adults with lymphoma problems who get cured and then are alive for decades. And, you know, the changes in how we give radiotherapy that includes proton radiotherapy, we believe, reduces consequential late occurrence side effects. And, you know, so particularly patients with mediastinal lymphomas, there are selective patients who we believe benefit from proton techniques to reduce normal tissue exposures. So that was a little long-winded, but wanted to be complete with how we see the role of radiotherapy, proton radiotherapy for our proposed center.
Thank you for your responses.
Attorney Mitchell, this is Chris Chandler. I'd like to just interject that the elegance of this whole model, and I appreciate my colleagues and their clinical excellence, but the elegance of the model too, is we take into account what are clinically appropriate patients to treat. And that's why we're proposing a one-room facility and not a five-room facility. Because we want to make sure we tie, as I said in my opening statements, what's clinically relevant to what's financially feasible. And that's why a one-room is so important. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to move on. The next set of questions relates to the determination of need. And so basically, in the response, in the prefiled testimony and response to OHS issues, it was stated that updated incidence rates from 2011 to 2015 from the American Cancer Society Cancer Statistics Center show that Connecticut cancer incidence rate was, I believe, the 10th highest in the nation at 479.6 per 100,000 people in the population compared to a national incidence rate of 449.8 per 100,000 people. And I just want, if someone can explain, I just want you to explain how that kind of large number relates to the need for this specific type of treatment? How does this incidence rate relate to the need for proton beam therapy? And you talk about it too with regard to the volume, your methodology when you determine volume. But I just kind of want to make the correlation between the incidence rate for cancer and how people are determined to be clinically appropriate. And then I'll ask you some questions about volume.
Sure, this is Andrew Solner. We, I wish we knew exactly why. Connecticut has a higher age-adjusted incidence rate of cancer in many cancer sites and overall than many other states. We don't really know. It is associated with states that have higher density, higher, more industrial settings. It's also been associated with states that have higher socioeconomic status. We really don't understand exactly why. But it does indicate that even though our population is relatively flat, that with the aging of the population, because cancer incidence increases with increasing age, it does suggest the fact that over the next 15 to 20 years, our cancer incidence will increase significantly in Connecticut, as is happening in most states in the country. And for that reason, we need to be prepared to have the capacity to care for that patient population. Even if our cancer incidence wasn't increasing and was remaining flat, we think that proton therapy is an important part of the armamentarium we need to take care of selected patients who would have better outcomes with proton therapy. But the fact that actually our cancer incidence rate will increase because of aging of the population and because it's already fairly high, given these high age-adjusted incidence rates, sort of adds further armamentarium to the notion that proton therapy simply helps us to fill out all of the strategies we need to successfully treat cancer patients in our, in the communities we serve.
Okay, so the next question kind of narrows it down further. So if you could speak to the assumptions that you made when you projected volume for the center? I think you said that you were using actual numbers. Can you just talk a little bit about the methodology behind that?
Yeah, what we did was, we took a look at the literature produced by Dr. Mendenhall and many other experts in the field to make some assessments about what percentage of patients we think with various tumor sites, and not only tumor sites, but stages of tumors, might benefit from protons. And we went through at all of the institutions at Hartford Healthcare and Yale New Haven, and then attempted to look statewide at what the need might be for proton therapy by tumor type. And developed, and Chris Chandler was helpful, having been through this with many of the other institutions that he's helped in terms of developing proton programs. We tried to develop a conservative guess, because that's really what it is, as to what the number might be of patients who would benefit from proton therapy. That's how we went through it.
And the next question is, how confident are you that you can meet projected volumes?
I think we're, I think we're pretty confident. We've allowed for a ramp up, because obviously it's not going to be treating 400 patients on day one. So we've allowed for a ramp up. We have to educate our own staffs and our referring docs as to what the benefits of proton therapy are. They already get that from the literature they read and the meetings they attend. But we have to gradually get people introduced to protons and where it may be of value and where it isn't of value. And so we're feeling quite confident that the numbers we've projected are actually on the conservative side, but are accurate in terms of where the proton volume might go. Recognizing that, you know, if you and your colleagues were good enough to approve this application over this next period of time and we initiated planning, construction, installation, and ultimately established the program, it's still two or three years away from starting. And there may be more indications, there could be fewer. It's possible, but we think that that's less likely. There may be actually more indications for protons, we'll see. But the program calls for a gradual ramp up over several years of patients as we learn more about protons and as our colleagues who refer patients begin to feel more comfortable with referring patients for protons.
What's the maximum volume capacity that can be achieved at the center?
The center, if treating in two shifts, which many proton centers around the country do, we think that we can treat somewhere in the upper 400s, close to 500, but maybe not quite, maybe 490 patients or so per year.
So you're right at that, based upon the information that you provided us? It looks like you're right at that, year four?
Yes, we would be maybe at 470 some patients or somewhere like that.
So what happens after you exceed that maximum volume capacity?
I think we would continually be evaluating the need for additional capacity in our state, even from day one, looking at the numbers and determining whether additional capacity is needed or not, whether there are any geographic barriers for patients in Connecticut to get to Wallingford. Recognizing that Wallingford is right off of Route 91 and other highways and should be relatively proximate for most residents of Connecticut. And if it appears at any time that we think that a one-room facility is not going to provide all the capacity needed, we would initiate discussions amongst ourselves and with all involved as to whether we should increase capacity by adding a second facility or a second room to the existing facility.
Well, during the experience of setting up our center, you know, we'll also be looking for improved efficiencies. I think in our modeling, you know, patients were being treated every 17 minutes on average. And we might be able to improve on that to help with capacity. We might be able to sort out treatment schemes that are shorter, that also allow us to treat more patients. But, you know, we honestly thought that the conservative and responsible plan to present to you for the CON application was a one-room facility. Knowing that there's, you know, some uncertainty as to actually how many patients we'll see. But we thought we were pretty responsible.
And this is Arlo May. Let me just also comment. We spent a lot of time talking about the size of this center. And I think both health systems were very concerned about being fiscally responsible and not building in excess capacity that may or may not be needed. So depending on treatment approaches, the research, the technology, a decision can be made. And we will see the volumes escalate either faster or slower. But we will also be prepared to act at that time. So we chose not to add two machines into our proton center. We've chosen to go with one so as to avoid unnecessary expense. Yet we could expand if we needed to on that site or somewhere else. Yeah. I would just add, this is Andrew Solner. I would just add to what Dr. Robertson and Mr. Lemay just said. And that is, Dr. Mendenhall mentioned some studies showing efficacy of shorter radiation courses. We've seen shorter radiation courses become more standard when we treat breast cancer and prostate cancer with photons. We don't know yet if shorter radiation courses will be more of a standard approach with protons. But theoretically, if they would, that would result in the need for fewer treatment slots overall, if you will, so that we can increase the number of patients being treated. So we'll have to wait and see how that plays itself out as the research becomes available.
Yeah. And then lastly, just to amplify what Mr. Lemay's comments were. There's a history in the field of certain proton centers being built too large and then were not fiscally sound. And we didn't, we certainly did not want to be in that situation. We also wanted to make sure that we didn't have so much capacity that we were then in an uncomfortable situation of having to stretch what was thought were the indications for proton radiotherapy. We wanted to be very much sure that what patients we select were appropriate for protons. And so again, after lots of discussions, believe me, we settled on a one-room concept, knowing that, you know, the burden of doing that was going to necessitate running two shifts. And, you know, we're fully and professionally prepared to do that.
And this is Chris Chandler from Proton International again. And just one comment from our side. This is the niche that our company understands how you build clinically relevant, successful proton centers from experience. And we believe that the one-room was the right way to go with this. That number is a capacity number. We could treat, we could treat more if the hypofractionation element's coming into play, as the doctors were indicating, will open in two or three years. So a lot can change between now and then. But the focus in our mind is treat what's clinically appropriate. Do it in a way where we know the center will be successful financially. And as Dr. Roberts indicated, we don't have to wake up one day and try to push patients through that aren't appropriate and relevant. So we think one-room is conservatively the way to go, very successful. We'll have plenty of patients. And our actual experience in our centers that have opened recently in Birmingham, Alabama, and South Florida bear this out, that those volumes are reasonable and attainable. And if you look over the history of centers that have opened, you can see that going from zero to 40, 50, 60 patients a day has been quite, has been achieved in essentially all the centers. The issue where you get into trouble is when some of these areas didn't have the appropriate clinical relationships, they built too big. And, you know, they just didn't have the demand. And so we're very cautious about coming to you with what we think is a valid, appropriate, and proper application that we can deliver on clinically. on clinically. And if we deliver on it clinically, then by definition, it will support itself financially.
Thank you. All right. Um, this question is a little bit duplicative. And basically, we wanted to understand which pediatric cancers proton beam therapy is approved for. I know that you all enumerated the types of, the types of cancers for which proton therapy is the standard of care. And because of the description of, you know, some of them, I guess the fact that the use of proton therapy minimizes side effects, that it would probably be an approach that would be best suited for children if, if it's clinically appropriate. Can someone speak to the types of pediatric cancers that it would be used for?
Sure.
Expertise, sir.
Dr. Ken Roberts. Yeah, the, the, well, the most common childhood malignancy is leukemia, and we wouldn't treat protons for that. CNS brain tumors are the next large category. And those are highly appropriate for proton radiotherapy. You then get into pediatric cancers being a collection of very rare tumors, but there are a number of different types. There are sarcomas, which are broken down into rhabdomyosarcoma, and the semantics are cumbersome, but non-rhabdomyosarcomas. Many of those, but not all, are appropriate for protons, depending on their anatomic site and how much radiation dose is required for that given circumstance and the need to reduce side effects. There are bone tumors. Many of those are treated with chemotherapy and surgery, but there's a cohort where radiotherapy is important. And a number of those, depending on the anatomic site, are best treated with proton radiotherapy. The, the concept is also of the benefit of radiotherapy is largely due to how old the patient is, whether they're still growing and developing, because we do a much better job of reducing what we call developmental side effects with proton radiotherapy. It just helps spare growing tissues. There are certain, you know, Hodgkin's lymphoma patients that are in the pediatric group that do benefit from protons, but not all patients with that diagnosis. There are probably patients with certain types, like Welm's tumor, which is a kidney tumor, or neuroblastoma, where a lot of times, there's not a big benefit to protons, and we would just treat with conventional x-rays. And you can then, you know, get into other, you know, rare types of pediatric tumors that there's a benefit. Does that help?
That's helpful. Thank you. All right. So the next set of questions, but actually the last question that we'll do before we take a break, this is actually for Mr. Chandler, and it's based on his prefiled testimony. He, he stated that we have drawn, and this is a quote, "We've drawn on our collective experience and designed the CPTC as a single gantry, lower-cost facility that can thrive by treating a reasonable number of proton-relevant patients." Proton International offers small proton facilities that are lower risk and more financially feasible than some of the larger centers that have been built nationwide and encountered financial difficulties. A one-room facility like CPTC is built under a lower cost and operational structure that can withstand reimbursement pressures. Structuring a financial, I'm sorry, structuring a financing solution that is low-cost, long-term, and does not demand unrealistic, unrealistic throughput assumptions will allow the CPTC to focus on providing proton beam therapy services to clinically appropriate patients. So two questions for you, Mr. Chandler. If you could, would you define what you mean when you use the term "cost"? And then when you use the term "lower cost," specify what you are using as a comparison.
Sure. And in general, that really refers to, and I think Dr. Mendenhall mentioned earlier in her testimony, there were early centers. The first two were Loma Linda and Mass General. Then there were some early adopters, mainly the University of Florida and MD Anderson, who did very well. And they did very well because, I believe, they were associated and affiliated with clinical excellence, understanding of how to use the proton therapy particle, everything we've talked about this morning. There was a grouping of centers that developed in the middle after that, that were large four- and five-room centers. Some were affiliated well with the right academic and clinical partners. Some, some perhaps were not. When I use the term "cost," I'm referring to the cost of those kind of middle-level centers that developed. And these were very high-cost centers, four- and five-room treatment centers, north of $150, $200, $250 million in those centers. When I refer to "lower cost," I'm referring to the fact that we want to reduce all the capital expenditures, reduce the operating expenses of our centers, and then try to get to the point where you need less revenue to break even and operate efficiently. And the whole premise around that was to go back to treating the right kinds of patients, where we don't have to manufacture, quote, "the demand for a patient to put them through the center" because we need the volume. And by doing that, you, you can create a more successful center, in my opinion, because you're focusing with your clinical partners on the appropriate use of proton therapy. With respect to the financing, and when I use the term "lower cost" in financing, these mid-level centers, and, you know, I can speak from experience because we did this at Procur, and, and these centers early on were not developed with, they were developed with very short-term, high-cost financing, more typical private equity financing and things like that. So those centers needed a lot of volume quickly to be able to be financially, you know, feasible. Those volumes, because they were such large, expensive centers, did not show up, and it caused an issue around in the industry. Now those, it wasn't an issue of whether proton therapy was clinically important or useful. It was a business model issue. It was, it was a, you know, business model that just didn't work. So the idea was to come back and say, well, proton therapy is important, but how can we structure a business model around it that will give it a better chance to work? And not to be too simplistic with it, but, you know, if you, if you buy a home and you have a 10-year mortgage versus a 30-year mortgage, your mortgage is higher on a 10-year mortgage. Well, most of those proton centers were developed under 10-year terms of financing. So, you know, not only have we gone to reduce the capital expenditures, we extended the financing term out to 30 years and tried to lower the cost of the financing using access to the tax-exempt municipal bond market. So hopefully that's responsive to your, to your question.
It is. I think this is a good time to take a break, but let me just turn to my colleagues. I just want to make sure Brian and Lindsay don't have any follow-up questions.
I don't.
No, I'm, I'm good.
All right. And then Attorney Fusco, anything that you wanted to add before we go to our break?
Just to let you know that Dr. Mendenhall is, is going to be leaving since 1 o'clock. That's okay.
I think, I don't think we have any other questions.
Okay. Thank you so much. And thank you, Dr. Mendenhall.
All right, everybody. So we're going to go off the record. We're going to come back at 1:45, and then we'll finish up with OHS's questions. All right, everybody. We are back on the record. I just want to check in over at the boardroom and make sure everybody's okay on that side. Let me know if you need more time.
Sorry, no, we're all set. We have everyone we need. Thanks.
All right. So Brian, I'm going to give it over to you.
Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Enjoyed your lunch?
Good afternoon.
Feeling a little bit like winter out today? So the, the next set of questions I have are all sort of financial related, as capital expenditure, the financial worksheets.
So this is Jen Fusco, Brian. So we have Jerry Blavere from HHC, as remote as is Fred Sorbo. The Yale New Haven finance folks are in another conference room, and I think they may come in here to answer those questions if we can just grab them. And Chris Chandler as well.
Okay, great. Do you need some time to do that, or you're just going to?
I think maybe one or two minutes.
One minute's grounded right around the corner.
Okay, sure.
Do you guys want to, maybe we can swap them out with you guys? I'll clean. Unmuted, Gabby. Okay, thank you. We're all set.
Okay.
Sorry, one more minute.
Okay.
No worries. Before we start again, is there anybody who has not been sworn in that's been brought into the room?
I know Tom was sworn in. Mario, you were sworn in as well. So we should be all set.
Perfect.
Fred was sworn in remote. And Jerry, too. Okay, now we're all set. Thank you.
All set? Okay. So, so at OHS, there's been some internal discussion about the cost of the proposal relative to the number of patients that are going to be treated in this project. So total capital expenditure for the proposal is $72 million. In the, in the, in seven, page 72 of the application, you state that Connecticut Proton Therapy Center intends to secure public bond financing to fund the project. Further, you state that the public bond financing will be a private placement management by Loop Capital Management, with the issued bonds able to be traded and information available on the electronic municipal market access system. Can you please sort of walk us through how this private placement management works for the bond?
And I think Chris Chandler would be the appropriate person. Chris? Thanks.
Sure, sure. Happy to do that. Thank you for the question. Obviously, as I mentioned earlier, the, the ability to access the, the tax-exempt municipal bond market's an important part of the project. So in general, we established the joint venture management company that we've referenced before between PI, Yale New Haven, and Hartford Healthcare. That, that will be CPTC, if you will. We will draft in cooperation with our placement agent, Loop Capital, which is an investment banking firm out of Chicago, a, a general memorandum that explains and outlines the details of the opportunity to invest in. We, we structure it as a tax-exempt filing. We use a tax-exempt bond conduit called the Public Finance Authority out of Wisconsin, which allows us to access the tax-exempt municipal bond market. The offering is made under all the appropriate security regulations and requirements. We typically structure it as a, a senior debt and a subordinated debt offering. The senior debt offering is offered to large institutional investors who are interested in these, these bonds. They typically tend to be in the tax-exempt market, but kind of high-yield, long, long-term bonds that are attractive to municipal investors. The subordinated bond, excuse me, the senior bonds that I've just referenced have a security package with them that's basically the assets of the CPTC entity and the technical revenue stream from the CPTC entity. And those, those assets are pledged, if you will, as security against the bonds.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
Go ahead. Sorry. Do you have a question?
Yes. What's the anticipated timeframe for repayment of that debt obligation?
We, normally they're structured as a series of tranches. You might have some shorter-term and some longer-term bonds.
Okay.
We, we push it as, as long as we can to have an average term of about, you know, 28 years or so. I think 27, 28 years. It just depends ultimately on where we end up. My colleague just indicated to me that, that it's a 30-year term that we, that we ultimately get to as we average out the different tranches.
30 years.
Yeah. And, and this, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, and the, the senior debt has that security package, the subordinated debt investors, and that's where PI and the institutions provide some capital into the subordinated debt. And they're buying the same security as the senior debt investors. It's just junior to the senior debt in the waterfall. But they have the same security package. It's just in a junior position.
Okay. Not as secure.
Correct. Correct. And because of that, it, it carries with it a slightly higher interest rate.
Right. Okay. Um, what legal entity will be responsible for repayment of this debt obligation?
The actual operational joint venture is responsible for operating the center and generating the revenues to repay the obligation. The bonds are actually secured to the PFA, Public Finance Initiative, Private Public Finance Asset Program. And so we have, we provide all of our securities to the, to the PFA asset program, and then they're responsible ultimately for the repayment of the bonds. If these bonds are nonrecourse, which I should have mentioned in my opening statements, too. So the, the risk to the parties is related to the subordinated debt. The subordinated debt, if you will, is at risk. The senior debt, if for some reason the entity was unable to repay the debt, those bonds are basically a project finance structure, and they're secured only by the assets that I mentioned earlier.
Okay. So that was kind of like a follow-up question. So in the event that, you know, maybe it's unlikely, but in the event that CPTC were to become insolvent, I would, the question is, who would be responsible for repayment of the debt? And I guess what you're saying is, the assets would be sold to fulfill the, the senior debt, and the subordinate debt would be out of luck?
Correct. And, and I think it may not be that the assets would be sold. Likely what would happen is the bondholders would, would step in rights, probably tell Proton International, "We appreciate all you did, but you didn't do a good job," and we would be out of luck. And when you have an asset like this, they typically would go back to the clinical institutions and work with them to come up with a strategy to keep the center going. Typically, in the past, when these, there have been some issues with the larger centers that have had some problems like this, and they've gone into a forbearance mode. And they've gone into a forbearance mode where they work with the parties to try to figure out what the problems are.
So, basically legally, like Yale, the Yale system or the Hartford Healthcare system would not really be on the hook if?
Correct. They would not have any risk other than the subordinated debt investment they make.
Okay. And what's the likelihood of this being approved, you know, to be, the bonds to be issued at that amount?
We're still very confident in it. I think Proton International pioneered this effort in accessing municipal bond with our projects in Birmingham and Delray. Since then, I believe there's been four or five additional centers using this finance mechanism. So, it's been well-received. I can tell you that in conversations with investors, they like our model. They like the one-room approach. They like the experience we bring to the table. And even in the COVID environment, you can imagine people are concerned. However, there's a tremendous amount of capital sitting out there looking for a way to go to work. And these long-term bond structures are really very appealing to the institutional investors. So, we're very confident in the fact that we'll continue to do it. We also have very good relations with the largest investors that have participated in these before. We continually have conversations with them, talk to them about how to structure these things so that they'll be amenable in the public markets. So, and again, that's why when we go back to my opening comments, this has to be based on excellent clinical partners that understand how they want to use proton therapy, that have identified the patient pool carefully. And you can imagine, these kind of senior investors don't take these things lightly. So, if we showed up and we didn't have a well-thought-out plan, the probability of investment would be lower. But because we come to them with experience, a well-thought-out plan, strong clinical partners, a clear identification of where the patients will come from, you know, and an independent feasibility study before we make the offering, our experience has been very positive and we don't see any reason why it wouldn't continue to be.
Okay. And just say for the, you know, there wasn't the interest quite, so it would be more of a delayed effect or an adjustment of the rates effect to encourage the participation? How would that work?
Yeah, I think that's a very good observation. There have been indications in the past in the bond market, not with Proton International, but with other projects where the initial offering was not quite as well-received and, you know, it took a little longer to get it done. They got done, but they would have an interest rate adjustment for the perceived risk or things like that. And we try to avoid that. So far, we've been able to close our transactions based upon how we assumed they would be because we go to the table with kind of a pre-planned, strong program with strong clinical partners. I would also mention, and you may be asking this in a minute, but I'll just jump in real quick because it's related to the financing. These are big numbers. You know, I mentioned earlier, well, you know, these are lower cost. Well, believe it or not, they are lower cost compared to what we used to deal with.
Relative.
Relative. And when you look at the total capex number versus a total financed number, you know, it jumps quite a bit. Well, that's because these municipal bond investors are taking essentially the risk. You asked me before, if this, if it doesn't work, who has to pay the note back? And the answer is really nobody. So, that risk gets priced into this. And it also, you know, there's always, you know, a trade-off, right, for what you do. It's really good that we can get this kind of money on a nonrecourse basis. But they require us to put up a debt service reserve fund and capitalize the interest during the development period. So, you know, they can pay the interest on these bonds during the couple of years that we're developing the center. We have to take all the funding down upfront.
Okay.
So, that's why the cost of this financing, you know, it looks like it's significantly, it is. It's a lot of money. But that's what it's for. It's to fund the capitalized interest and things like that. And finally, we're being very conservative as we bring things to you in our application. But what we're doing is, as we're becoming more aware of the costs, we're going to minimize every area we can to reduce the cost. Ultimately, that reduces the capitalized interest and things like that. So, we're confident that over time, as we finish the building design, as we select the contractor, as we understand more about, you know, whether it's going to be site costs we're not aware of yet, and our contingencies will fall away. And ultimately, we'll do everything we can do to reduce the overall cost of the project.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, Mr. Chandler. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. My pleasure.
All right. My next question has to do with some financial projections you provided me in Exhibit E on page 1917. And I think you also provided the same table in the prefiled testimony. Let's see, where is that? I think that's called the CPTC Programmatic Financial Projections. It's on page five, I think, of the prefiled, of the issues portion of the prefiled.
Brian, this is Jen. If you could just clarify, is it a pro forma? Is it one of the financial worksheets?
It's a table that you provided within the application, yeah.
Yep, here we go. And so, just for Jerry Blavere's reference, who's remote, Jerry, it's on page five of the Hearing Issues Responses. It was also part of the CON filing. It's the programmatic breakdown. Okay.
All set, Jen?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, CPTC programmatic financial projections were provided showing financial solvency for the program in the third year of operation. Please walk me through these numbers and explain why this is the more appropriate way to determine financial feasibility.
Do we want to start with proton piece?
Yeah, do you want us to, Chris, do you want to start with proton piece? Or do you want us to answer for the health systems?
If you would answer for the health systems and then, I'm struggling in all of the open documents. I have to find it, so I'll find it while you guys are answering. I apologize for that.
This is Tom Newman from Yale New Haven Health. So, I'll respond to the Yale New Haven programmatic financial projections that we had for each of the three years. And so, while the program breaks, even in year three, Yale New Haven, in particular, as I'm speaking to, has losses in each of those years. And what that represents is our estimate of those cases that we currently provide care for in LINAC and other procedures that would be moved to the proton therapy joint venture. And that would be the gap, assuming not, that we wouldn't backfill. So, it's a conservative gap from that perspective.
So, the significant driver for the incremental losses is due to a reduction in revenue from the sort of transfer of patients out of, you know, traditional treatment to proton therapy?
Our contribution from the Yale New Haven side and Hartford's contribution from their perspective. Jerry can speak to.
Okay.
You're on mute, Jerry.
Jerry, you're on mute. I, our response would be the same as Tom's. It's similar situation.
Okay, and it looks like, you know, the profits or, I guess, in each of your cases, be 24.5% of the profits of CPTC in 2024 would be reflected in your financial pro forma and non-operating revenue. I think the figure was like 945,000 or something like that. I guess my question is, you know, incremental losses are over a million dollars and they continue throughout the whole projections. That's a little concerning, I think, to the agency that, you know, especially given, you know, recent losses with COVID, that you would be taking on a project that's going to lose, each system would lose, you know, an additional sort of million plus per year. Now, how can you sort of respond to us about that?
I guess I'll start. Again, this is Tom Newman from Yale New Haven. I think that I would say is that the way we calculated this impact was conservative and that these were the estimated revenues associated with patients who would be contributed to this process. We have a robust cancer program that is frequently at capacity and we would continue to expand and fill those voids over time. And we believe that that, as our cancer centers continue to grow, that that capacity will be reabsorbed by the system.
Okay. Couple times, we sort of talked about sort of a break-even point with the funds that, you know, the amount of contributions that would be put in by, you know, each system and when and if, or would there ever be a sort of a break-even point for those contributions? And you guys didn't really sort of have a response as far as, you know, that time period. I mean, it looks like the bonds are going to be issued for 30 years. So, I mean, is it going to be that long a time period before you're sort of at a break-even point for the commitment, you know, that the systems are putting into this project?
This is Chris. Maybe I can help a little bit with that. And a couple of different points too. The, and I don't want to speak to the institution's numbers, you know, they have those in front of them. But from the perspective of when we operate the center and, and let's say we're, you know, doing well in the center, we'll generate between $2 and $3 million a year, including management fees from the center. We're still in the process of negotiating the management fee structure and the numbers and the amount, but the center will generate free cash flow. As you well know, when you have a tax-exempt structure, you don't distribute profits, but the entity would own access to the profits pursuant to fair market value contracts and things like that. So, the intention here is to, through a management fee structure, a fair market value management fee structure, share the revenues that go back for the services performed by the institutions and by Proton International. So, really, we think within four or five years, based upon the management fee revenue that they'll share, they'll be able to reach break-even points just specifically from their respective subordinated debt investments. So, that's really that structure there. The other aspect that it's hard to bring out in these kinds of things is the general halo effect around proton therapy centers. And I wish Dr. Mendenhall was still on. But in all of my experience and all of the experience we've seen in centers we've actually built and opened, the clinical partner that's involved sees a significant amount of additional services from, as mentioned earlier. We don't treat every patient that shows up at the door with protons. Sometimes they get traditional radiation. Oncology patients, you know, they're, they need concurrent therapies. Often, they have surgeries or chemotherapy. So, this really is a holistic approach to the best treatment, possible treatment of care for the patient. And it's very hard to pigeonhole every piece of revenue that might come back to the individual parties.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, did you want to add? Just, I think Tom has one more thing to add too.
Yeah, just to restate what I said and to emphasize, I think that the combination of the, you know, just under a million-dollar impact, that this is really not, considering our projections did not consider the backfill, as I said earlier. So, we would assume there would be backfilling as well as what Chris mentioned, the halo effect and other revenues generated in our programs as it relates to these patients. And also, the real driver of this is it's the right thing for patients, you know, in collaboration with our providers and operating partners, the mission is just that. It's really in the interest of patient care. And, you know, we feel it's the right thing to do whether there was this, an annual loss impact or not. And the organizations are both, I would, not to speak for Jerry, but sizable enough to absorb this loss if that were the worst-case scenario.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. This is Jerry. Just to confirm all of what Tom said, you know, this really is about clinical care. And while we've presented the economic loss that is possible from, without backfill, from the shifting from one modality to another, ultimately, it's the right thing for patients. And we will adjust our operations, you know, find efficiencies in various pockets, ultimately hope to, you know, make up those dollars either by backfilling or other efficiencies elsewhere as we, you know, but we have the financial strength to easily adopt this new model.
Okay, just kind of following up in this sort of same theme. You've kind of answered most of it for me. But given the recent newspaper articles reflecting information like Yale New Haven hospital system is expected to lose unprecedented $400 million due to COVID. You know, the timing of this good for, you know, proposal that's going to sort of add to the burden with incremental losses of more than a million a year? And, you know, your system's going to be able to absorb sort of the additional debt, you know, right at this time? Because maybe you can speak to that.
Sure. Thanks for that question. And it's a good one. Obviously, you know, the economic pressures in the wake of COVID have been significant and we continue to recover. The oncology program has really been least affected throughout the COVID pandemic. And many of the volumes stayed very close to where they were, what we call the baseline. So, that's all adding to the strength and support of this component of what we provide. From the operating side, you know, we're a couple of years out before this, the center would be built. So, we fully expect to be back to baseline and growing again before, well, before the center opens. And from a capital perspective, as it relates to our investment in the, you know, in the upcoming year, we assume and have built into our prioritization of capital for the upcoming year, the expectation that we will be doing this. As much as we've been conservative in the impact of our financial projections in the upcoming year and our recovery, you know, we've included this as a priority.
Okay. Good on that answer. Anything from the other side?
Jerry, do you have a, Jerry, do you have a comment on Hartford's behalf?
No, it's the same challenge in terms of, you know, we are recovering nicely and, you know, it's an unfortunate loss, you know, and, you know, both in terms of lives as well as activity. But we know that people are going to continue to get sick. We're, you know, we feel good about our volumes and our position, you know, going forward. This is, you know, COVID, even though it's dragged on way too long and will continue to drag on, you know, will come to an end and, you know, we're figuring out every day how to adjust, you know, to battle the disease and get everything back on track.
All right. So, my apologies. One final sort of COVID-related question. So, given the effect of the global pandemic on net revenue for fiscal year 2020 for all hospital systems within the state and the future uncertainty as a result of the current increases going on with COVID infections, please indicate whether you have made any adjustments in planning or your projects, planning of your projects to minimize losses. If you have, elaborate upon those adjustments.
So, we certainly, from a Yale New Haven, this is Tom Newman, from a Yale New Haven health system perspective. You know, we have a lot of lessons learned from the first round of COVID. And as we look and are currently preparing, as our, as our experience with COVID cases continues to grow in the second wave on a daily basis, you know, we don't intend to voluntarily close programs down as we did in the, as we did in the initial phase. So, we, our expectation and plans are to continue to provide that care in a safe environment for our patients as long as they're willing to come and receive that care. And should it get to a certain point, then we would have to talk about what services we would need to adjust should those volumes reach a certain level.
I guess, of course, too, that would be affected too if state government imposed sort of kind of a similar thing to before about. sort of kind of a similar thing to before about not, not doing elective surgeries.
Correct.
Do you guys have the final tally for the impact of COVID on fiscal year 20?
I don't have that.
Speaking for, yeah, speaking for Hartford Healthcare, we're still in the middle of discussing things with our auditors, et cetera. So, we don't yet have a finalization. A lot of the federal rules have continued to change from the spring. And so, it's too early to publicly present a number because we're still working with our auditors as we all understand what the changing rules, how the changing rules might have impacted us.
Okay. Michaela, do you think, should we ask for a late file at this point? I know our executive director is going to be highly interested in sort of seeing these, the financial worksheets updated to the best of your ability to show us the impact. I think, you know, utilizing the same years that you submitted earlier was just sort of an update. So, I would appreciate if you could, you know, provide those updates for the two health systems and for the center itself.
So, yeah, I just want to echo that. It goes without saying that this is, you know, an expensive project. And so, that is one of her main concerns. And I think that in order for us to make an informed decision, we have to know what the financial status for each system is, especially if the system is projecting, even though it's a conservative projection, is projecting that there will be a loss. So, I don't see any way of getting around that. And I think that the question would be if we requested late files for updated financials, how, how long would that take?
So, we expect our audit to be completed and issued just before Christmas. That's usually the timing of our audit report.
But would we, I mean, Attorney Mitchell, will we be looking more to do it on a short term basis, sort of to the best of our ability now, understanding that audits aren't complete? But, you know, whatever we could give in the next two weeks, is that what you'd be looking for versus?
I think that she wants as close to actual as possible. And I'm thinking that she may want to know what was the actual for fiscal year 2020 projected out until 2022.
Jerry, from an HHC perspective, how long would that take? Same timing?
Well, we're on, we're on a similar schedule as, as Tom at Yale, New Haven. We would have to caucus to see if there's something that could be done, you know, in the next couple of weeks, as an example. Again, the rules are changing from the federal government, you know, excuse me, today, additional guidance came out, which has to be absorbed. So, it, you know, it continues to be, you know, a rapidly changing situation. So, the finality that you're looking for and we're looking for is probably not, you know, totally available, but we can make our best efforts to respond as quickly as possible.
But Attorney Mitchell, if you're amenable, I mean, I would suggest that we take this down as a late file and then we caucus as a group, you know, tomorrow and get back to you with sort of the timeframe. Would that work? And then we could agree upon what we can provide when and come up with a timeframe for submission?
I think that works. Let me just, Brian, as he knows a lot about the financials, let me just ask, Brian, was there anything that you wanted to say about that?
That seems reasonable to me. I would like to, if it was possible, to get like a sort of a summary version of information provided to me about the bond financing in writing as opposed to trying to get about the transcript that Chris provided. I think that would be very helpful to sort of understand.
Yep.
Sure, it would be.
A lot of information. I tried to absorb most of it, Chris, but I'm not sure I got all of it, but I tried.
Be happy to do that. Yep.
Thank you.
All right. So, what we'll do is we will, the record's going to remain open anyway for a week to receive written comments, if anybody has any. And so, we can confer tomorrow after everybody has had time to talk about it and figure out the parameters for the late file in terms of what should be included and the timeframe for producing the information.
Yeah, we had the estimate of pediatric referrals, too, Michaela, to add to the list, just saying.
Thanks. Attorney Fusco, did you get that, too?
I did. So, the estimate of.
You're able to provide.
Referrals, yep.
Brian, was there a last question?
Yes.
Okay. And then also, Lindsay, did you have anything additional?
No, no, I didn't.
I'm going to turn it back over to you, Attorney Fusco. Is there anything additional that you wanted to add?
No, I think we're, we're in good shape. I mean, we'll, we'll keep it open for the public portion. We know we have a few folks prepared to testify. And I don't know, I mean, if we would have anything we'd need to respond to after that, probably not. But so, so now, while we're here, we'll thank you guys for, for all your time and effort on this if we don't get to wrap up later. But no, we appreciate this. This has been a very well-run and informative hearing. And I know it's difficult and there are even more challenges with all of us being in different places. So, thanks so much for bearing with us. And most of us, or a good number of us, will still be here through the public portion. And we'll be in communication as needed.
Yeah, we just, we appreciate the applicants being so organized. This was easy for us. So, thank you so much.
We try. We tried hard. We appreciate it.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, so we're going to go off the record unless, Attorney Fusco, you have people that want to render public comment now. We're going to go off the record and then we'll come back on at four for people who have public comment that they want to render. The other thing, too, is that I think at three o'clock, not sure if Leslie Greer is still on, but at three o'clock, there's going to be a registration period for people who want to render public comment. So, we'll kind of do it in the order that people present themselves. And I know that there were two people that you wanted to go in tandem. Can you just remind me who those two people were?
It was Dr. Aileen Gillan and Matt Somberg. She's the physician and he's a patient's parent.
Got it.
Thank you very much.
So, we have those two. We'll let Dr. Gillan and Mr. Somberg go first.
Oh, Gillen, I'm sorry, with a G. Gillen with a G. Sorry.
No, Gillen. Got it.
I'm here, Michaela.
I'm sorry. Oh, Leslie, thank you. Okay. So, and then one last thing, Attorney Fusco, did you want to make a formal closing statement so that I don't forget it when we do the comment?
I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to. I think we've gone through everything. Appreciate the opportunity. But I think unless anything comes up in the public comments, we should be good. But thank you.
I think everybody for their time, I will wait to hear back from you, Attorney Fusco, on, you know, what you guys think you can provide and then the timeframe. And then what I'll do after I do hear from you is I'll issue a formal order with the timeframe and everything that we agreed upon.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for your.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
Bye.
Is Attorney Fusco there?
Yes, I'm right here.
Oh, great. It's one of the, I was just checking my, this is the stenographer. I was just checking my witness list. And the, the chair sworn, someone named Miss Gurdie?
Gurdie, D U R D Y, but she didn't speak.
No, I didn't speak.
Right. But you were sworn in, so I have to make sure and put it reflected on the transcript. So, would you, would you state and spell your full name for me?
Sure. Barbara Gurdie, D U R D Y. Barbara, B A R B A R A.
Right. D U R D Y.
Correct.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Leslie, Brian, are you there?
Are you there?
I'm here. This is Leslie.
Leslie, we're, we're hearing that folks that want to speak during the public comment portion are having difficulty logging in and registering. I see Matt Somberg is online, but he said he's not, hasn't been able, he doesn't know how to contact you to register.
Okay. So, he shouldn't be able to register. All he needed was the password.
He's on, but I don't know. I think people think they are going to be speaking to you to give them, to give you their names and let you know that they want to speak.
Okay. He can either, I don't know, he can, he can give you his name and I can just write them down.
Yeah, he's on right now. It's Matt Somberg. And then we had someone else who couldn't connect on the line.
It was the mayor of Wallingford. And Tim Ryan, the Economic Development Director.
They haven't called him yet.
Oh, Tim. What was the name again? I'm sorry.
Tim, Tim Ryan, and who's the mayor? So, it's Tim Ryan and. They're with us. Mayor Dickinson, Mayor Dickinson from Wallingford.
Okay.
Will you want to tell them that they're on now? They should try logging on.
Yeah, they should call them now.
So, Barbara, are you still there?
Leslie, we're still here. Did you have a question?
No. So, Mayor, Mayor Dickerson will be first and then Tim Ryan after him.
Okay, that'll be fine. And then we're expecting, oh, there, Dr. Gillen just logged on and then Matt Somberg.
Okay. And then we also have a Dr. Yan, Yan Madal. I don't want to screw his name up. So, they'll go in that order.
Yeah. No, I think we need to ask that. So, Dr. Gillen and then Matt Somberg directly after.
Yes. Can you hear me? Dr. Gillen.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, Dr. Gillen. You're, this is Attorney Fusco. You're all signed up, I believe. We just, correct, Leslie, she's on.
Okay. And you can hear me okay?
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want me to go ahead?
No, the public portion will start at four o'clock. This is just the sign up portion.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to be idling. And I wanted to say hi. This is Ken Roberts. So, yeah, good to see you. Thanks very much.
Hey, Aileen, it's Andy. How are you?
I am well. How are you, Andy?
Fine, thanks. Good. Thank you for being here. We greatly appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. No, no problem. I just rushing, I actually just sent a patient to the protons for the next six weeks. So, I was a little delayed there.
Okay.
Three-year-old.
We hope we'll have, we'll have that program in Connecticut sooner than later.
Yeah, I hope so. We don't start till four, correct?
Correct.
Right.
So, I, I think I'm going to mute us here in this room.
So I, I think I'm going to mute us here in this room.
Hello, this is Les Yonamoto. I was wondering if you could hear me and that I'm on the list for speakers.
We've got you down, Mr. Yonamoto.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. About four minutes out from going back on the record. I just want to let anyone know that wishes to speak, that they need to make sure that they announce that they're here. I'm actually seeing the participant numbers rising, so I want to make the announcement that if there's anybody that wants to render public comment, that they need to make sure that they state their names so that our Consumer Information Representative, Leslie Greer, can capture your name and put it on the list. Thank you. Hello, this is Michaela Mitchell. I'm the Hearing Officer for the hearing today. I just want to make sure that everyone who is going to be rendering public comment has spoken with our Consumer Information Representative, Leslie Greer, to make sure that they sign up. If you haven't done so, you can reach out to her. You can just unmute yourself and just announce your name, and we will make sure that we call you in the order in which you have signed technically indicated that you're here, not signed up, but let us know.
Hello, this is Les Yonamoto. I was wondering if you could hear me and that I'm on the list for speakers.
We've got you down, Mr. Yonamoto.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. About one more minute until we go back on the record. Just want to let everybody know. All right, so it's four o'clock and we're going to go back on the record. Just want to make sure everyone's here. All right. So again, we're back on the record with the public portion of hearing nineteen dash three-two-three-three-nine CON involving Hartford Healthcare Corporation and Yale New Haven Health Services Corporation's application to establish proton therapy services by acquisition of new technology to the state and acquisition of a CT simulator. My name is Michaela Mitchell. I'm the Hearing Officer for the hearing today. Also in attendance are Lindsay Donston, who is an analyst working on the application with me, and Brian Carney, who is the team lead for the Certificate of Need team. In addition to that, we do have Leslie Greer, who is our Consumer Information Rep, who has been signing everyone up for their participation in public comment this afternoon. I'm just going to ask all participants, to the extent possible, to enable the use of their video cameras when commenting during the proceedings. Anyone who's not commenting should mute their electronic devices and also, just in case they're not muted, make sure all televisions, telephones, and other devices that are not actively being used have been silenced. We're going to call individuals in the, individuals in the order in which they've signed up to speak. If I miss anybody, please utilize the raise hand function and let me know. I will make sure that I get to you. So far, I think we have six people who have signed up to speak. I just want to ask everyone, before you give your comments, please make sure that you state and spell your name for the purpose of accurate transcription. We are now starting to transcribe public comments. Speaking time is going to be limited to about three minutes. I don't want you to be dismayed if we stop you at the conclusion of your time. We want to make sure we give everybody the opportunity to speak and we want to be fair. If people are ending their, their statements around that three-minute mark, I'll give you a little bit of extra time to make your final statements. Additionally, if you're, if you know someone who wanted to make a statement and they couldn't be here today, please let them know that we encourage submission of any further or additional written comments to OHS by email. I'm going to hold the record open for public comment until November 25th of 2020. Our email address for that purpose is COMMENT, C-O-M-M-E-N-T at ct.gov. While we prefer to receive written comments electronically, you also have the option of mailing comments to the office. Our mailing address is PO Box 340308, 450 Capitol Avenue in Hartford, Connecticut. The zip is 061340308. I want to thank everybody for taking the time to be here today and for your cooperation. I know that we did say we're going to let Dr. Gillen go first, but I do understand that we have the mayor for the town of Wallingford. Let me just ask, Dr. Gillen, do you mind if, if the mayor just makes some comments briefly before you go?
That would be fine. I'm sorry for that.
Oh, it's no problem. Not to worry. All right, so we, we're going to start with, I did, I think that we did have the mayor for Wallingford. Is it Mr. Dickinson?
That is correct.
Okay, if you would, go ahead and give your public comment. You're, you're able to do so. Just make sure you state your full name for us.
All right. Good afternoon, Attorney Mitchell, members of the Office of Health Safety Staff. My name is William Dickinson, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-D-I-C-K-I-N-S-O-N. I serve as mayor in Wallingford, and with me is Steve Zivatelli, Director of the Wallingford Health Department, and Tim Ryan, Director of our Wallingford Economic Development Department. We salute the thoughtful joint effort of Yale New Haven and Health Services and Hartford Healthcare Corporation to establish the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. Proton therapy, as you are aware, is very important for cancer care delivery, research, and education. Connecticut as a state lacks this form of cancer care. Wallingford's central location in Connecticut and its proximity to major transportation options, such as major state highways and rail service, will assist the residents throughout Connecticut to more easily access this cancer care. This application has the full support of Wallingford. We thank you for providing this opportunity to encourage approval of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center application for a certificate of need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Dickinson. Let me just ask, Mr. Ryan, I know you're with Mayor Dickinson. Did you want to make a separate comment?
I think the mayor speaks for all of us, and we are all in resounding support of this application and this project. Thank you.
Got it. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to Dr. Eileen Gillen.
That's correct. Thank you. Good afternoon, Attorney Mitchell, members of the House Strategy. Good afternoon, Attorney Mitchell, members of the House Strategy. Good afternoon, Attorney Mitchell, members of the House Strategy.
For about four minutes out from going back on the record, I just want to let anyone know that wishes to speak, that they need to make sure that they announce that they're here. I'm actually seeing the participant numbers rising, so I want to make the announcement that if there's anybody that wants to render public comment, that they need to make sure that they state their names so that our Consumer Information Representative, Leslie Greer, can capture your name and put it on the list. Thank you. About one more minute until we go back on the record. Just want to let everybody know. All right, so it's four o'clock and we're going to go back on the record. Just want to make sure everyone's here. All right. So again, we're back on the record with the public portion of hearing nineteen dash three-two-three-three-nine CON involving Hartford Healthcare Corporation and Yale New Haven Health Services Corporation's application to establish proton therapy services by acquisition of new technology to the state and acquisition of a CT simulator. My name is Michaela Mitchell. I'm the Hearing Officer for the hearing today. Also in attendance are Lindsey Donston, who is an analyst, working on the application with me, and Brian Carney, who is the team lead for the Certificate of Need team. In addition to that, we do have Leslie Greer, who is our Consumer Information Rep, who has been signing everyone up for their participation in public comment this afternoon. I'm just going to ask all participants, to the extent possible, to enable the use of their video cameras when commenting during the proceedings. Anyone who's not commenting should mute their electronic devices and also, just in case they're not muted, make sure all televisions, telephones, and other devices that are not actively being used have been silenced. We're going to call individuals in the, individuals in the order in which they've signed up to speak. If I miss anybody, please utilize the raise hand function and let me know. I will make sure that I get to you. So far, I think we have six people who have signed up to speak. I just want to ask everyone, before you give your comments, please make sure that you state and spell your name for the purpose of accurate transcription. We are now starting to transcribe public comments. Speaking time is going to be limited to about three minutes. I don't want you to be dismayed if we stop you at the conclusion of your time. We want to make sure we give everybody the opportunity to speak and we want to be fair. If people are ending their, their statements around that three-minute mark, I'll give you a little bit of extra time to make your final statements. Additionally, if you're, if you know someone who wanted to make a statement and they couldn't be here today, please let them know that we encourage submission of any further or additional written comments to OHS by email. I'm going to hold the record open for public comment until November 25th of 2020. Our email address for that purpose is COMMENT, C-O-M-M-E-N-T at ct.gov. While we prefer to receive written comments electronically, you also have the option of mailing comments to the office. Our mailing address is PO Box 340308, 450 Capitol Avenue in Hartford, Connecticut. The zip is 061340308. I want to thank everybody for taking the time to be here today and for your cooperation. I know that we did say we're going to let Dr. Gillen go first, but I do understand that we have the mayor for the town of Wallingford. Let me just ask, Dr. Gillen, do you mind if, if the mayor just makes some comments briefly before you go?
Dr. Gillen? That would be fine. I'm sorry for that.
Oh, it's no problem. Not to worry. All right, so we, we're going to start with, I did, I think that we did have the mayor for Wallingford. Is it Mr. Dickinson?
That is correct.
Okay, if you would, go ahead and give your public comment. You're, you're, you're able to do so. Just make sure you state your full name for us.
All right. Good afternoon, Attorney Mitchell, members of the Office of Health Safety Staff. My name is William Dickinson, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-D-I-C-K-I-N-S-O-N. I serve as mayor in Wallingford, and with me is Steve Zivatelli, Director of the Wallingford Health Department, and Tim Ryan, Director of our Wallingford Economic Development Department. We salute the thoughtful joint effort of Yale New Haven and Health Services and Hartford Healthcare Corporation to establish the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. Proton therapy, as you are aware, is very important for cancer care delivery, research, and education. Connecticut as a state lacks this form of cancer care. Wallingford's central location in Connecticut and its proximity to major transportation options, such as major state highways and rail service, will assist the residents throughout Connecticut to more easily access this cancer care. This application has the full support of Wallingford. We thank you for providing this opportunity to encourage approval of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center application for a certificate of need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Dickinson. Let me just ask, Mr. Ryan, I know you're with Mayor Dickinson. Did you want to make a, a separate comment?
I think the mayor speaks for all of us, and we are all in resounding support of this application and this project. Thank you.
Got it. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to Dr. Eileen Gillen.
That's correct. Thank you. Good afternoon, Attorney Mitchell and the members of the Office of Health Strategy Staff. My name is Eileen Gillen. I'm a pediatric oncologist at the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of this proposal to bring proton therapy services to the state and specifically, the benefits that will accrue to our patients and their families. Matthew Somberg, the father of Cooper, who was one of my patients and underwent proton therapy in Boston on two occasions, will speak after me about his family's experience. First of all, let me, allow me to give me, give you some of my background as a pediatric oncologist. I have been practicing in Connecticut Children's Medical Center. enable the use of their video cameras when commenting during the proceedings. Anyone who's not commenting should mute their electronic devices and also, just in case they're not muted, make sure all televisions, telephones, and other devices that are not actively being used have been silenced. We're going to call individuals in the need, individuals in the order in which they've signed up to speak. If I miss anybody, please utilize the raise hand function and let me know. I will make sure that I get you. So far, I think we have six people who have signed up to speak. I just want to ask everyone, before you give your comments, please make sure that you state and spell your name for the purpose of accurate transcription. We are now starting to transcribe public comments. Speaking time is going to be limited to about three minutes. I don't want you to be dismayed if we stop you at the conclusion of your time. We want to make sure we give everybody the opportunity to speak and we want to be fair. If people are ending their their statements around that three-minute mark, I'll give you a little bit of extra time to make your final statements. Additionally, if you're, if you know someone who wanted to make a statement and they couldn't be here today, please let them know that we encourage submission of any further or additional written comments to OHS by email. I'm going to hold the record open for public comment until November twenty-fifth of 2020. Our email address for that purpose is C-O-N comment, C-O-M-M-E-N-T at C-T dot gov. While we prefer to receive written comments electronically, you also have the option of mailing comments to the office. Our mailing address is P.O. Box three four zero three zero eight, four fifty Capital Avenue in Hartford, Connecticut. The zip is zero six one three four zero three zero eight. I want to thank everybody for taking the time to be here today and for your cooperation. I know that we did say we're going to let Dr. Gillen go first, but I do understand that we have the mayor for the town of Wallingford. Let me just ask Dr. Gillen, do you mind if if the mayor just makes some comments briefly before you go? Dr. Gillen?
That would be fine. I'm sorry for that.
Oh, it's no problem. Not to worry. All right, so we were going to start with, I did, I think that we did have the mayor for Wallingford. Is it Mr. Dickinson?
That is correct.
Okay, if you would go ahead and give your public comment, you're 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 able to do so. Just make sure you state your full name for us.
All right. Good afternoon, Attorney Mitchell, members of the Office of Health Safety Staff. My name is William Dickinson, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-D-I-C-K-I-N-S-O-N. I serve as mayor in Wallingford, and with me is Steve Zivatelli, Director of the Wallingford Health Department, and Tim Ryan, Director of our Wallingford Economic Development Department. We salute the thoughtful joint effort of Yale New Haven and Health Services and Hartford Healthcare Corporation to establish the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center. Proton therapy, as you are aware, is very important for cancer care delivery, research, and education. Connecticut as a state lacks this form of cancer care. Wallingford's central location in Connecticut and its proximity to major transportation options, such as major state highways and rail service, will assist the residents throughout Connecticut to more easily access this cancer care. This application has the full support of Wallingford. We thank you for providing this opportunity to encourage approval of the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center application for a certificate of need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Dickinson. Let me just ask, Mr. Ryan, I know you're with Mayor Dickinson. Did you want to make a separate comment?
I think the mayor speaks for all of us, and we are all in resounding support of this application and this project. Thank you.
Got it. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to Dr. Eileen Gillen.
That's correct. Thank you. Good afternoon, Attorney Mitchell and the members of the Office of Health Strategy Staff. My name is Eileen Gillen. I'm a pediatric oncologist at the Connecticut Children's Medical Center. Thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of this proposal to bring proton therapy services to the state and specifically the benefits that will accrue to our patients and their families. Matthew Sonberg, the father of Cooper, who was one of my patients and underwent proton therapy in Boston on two occasions, will speak after me about his family's experience. First of all, let me allow me to give me, give you some of my background as a pediatric oncologist. I have been practicing in Connecticut Children's Medical Center since it opened in nineteen ninety-six. I am the medical director of the Pediatric Neuro-oncology Program and the founder of the Survivorship and Cardio-oncology Programs. Within these three subspecialty areas, I have seen the type of damage that radiation has done to our patients, and I wanted to speak to that today. First, I would like to share my experience with our pediatric neuro-oncology patients. The standard of care for pediatric patients requiring brain or spine radiation is unequivocally proton therapy. Currently, greater than ninety percent of our neuro-oncology patients are referred to the Proton Center at Mass General for proton radiation therapy. This is the standard of care for this patient population. Those patients not referred include patients who have no chance of cure and those families who do not have access to this care due to social or financial reasons. Late effects, as I know we've spoken about today, or long-term of side effects from cancer treatment are seen in the majority of our patients. I have seen many of these patients survive with lifelong debilitating radiation late effects in my survivorship clinics. These late effects are accentuated by the child's growing tissues. Currently, greater than eighty-five percent of all pediatric cancers are successfully treated, and patients are now survivors with a normal life expectancy. Unfortunately, radiation late effects are often cumulative throughout the rest of their lives and lead to diminished quality of life with associated physical, emotional, and financial burdens to these patients and also to our society. Clinical studies, the use of proton therapy for pediatric brain and spinal tumors is especially important and is supported by many clinical studies. Most importantly, neurocognitive function. Proton radiation therapy allows improved neurocognitive function after treatment when compared to traditional photon therapy. This has been shown in several studies in which the proton group exhibited superior long-term outcomes in categories of IQ, perceptual reasoning, and working memory when compared with the photon group. Unfortunately, those patients who received traditional radiation therapy exhibited significant decline in these functions, including IQ. This decline in IQ can be avoided somewhat by the use of proton therapy. There is also a decrease in brain hormone dysfunction. This can lead to poor linear growth, thyroid, and sexual dysfunction. These late effects can often be avoided by proton therapy. Proton radiation therapy to the spine also delivers less dose to the vertebrae of a growing child, and thus there's less spinal growth abnormalities, and thus leading to an improved quality of life for these young patients. In addition, side effects, the organs adjacent to the spine which is irradiated, such as the thyroid gland, the heart, the gonads, are also affected by the proton therapy. In addition, traditional radiation scatter to the heart and lead to significant cardiac damage in is increased in patients who have photon therapy. Finally, secondary cancers in children may develop from underlying genetic syndromes. Radiation to adjacent normal tissues harboring this predisposition may promote secondary malignancies. Due to the nature of proton therapy, less radiation will be delivered to this tissue, leading to improved quality of life. In conclusion, proton radiation therapy is considered the standard of care in the pediatric patient population, particularly in neuro-oncology. The use of proton therapy leads to decreased neurological sequelae, a decrease in neuroendocrine, and also cardiac dysfunction, among other benefits. The proposed Pro- Connecticut Proton Therapy Center will allow patients throughout Connecticut to benefit from the greater control of their cancer and less treatment-related effects that are associated with proton therapy. Now, I'd like to introduce Matthew Sonberg, whose son Cooper has had treatment at the Boston Proton Center on two occasions. This story will tell the parent perspective. Thank you again for allowing me to address this committee.
Thank you.
Welcome. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Matthew Sonberg. Hello to the members of the Office of Health Strategy Staff. I'm a resident of Glastonbury, Connecticut. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak for a few minutes this afternoon. I speak to you as a parent and as a Connecticut resident. As Dr. Gillen mentioned, our youngest son Cooper, at ten months old, had an emergency surgery for what turned out to be a cancerous brain tumor, an appendectomy. We have no prior medical knowledge or medical experience in our family, and literally overnight, we were turned on to a new world. The surgery was incredibly complicated, and there were a lot of complications after the fact. We lived in the ICU at Connecticut Children's for three months. And during that time, we learned that his tumor wasn't an appendectomy, which is cancerous. And as Dr. Gillen mentioned earlier, and as was explained to us at that time, our treatment options were very limited. Chemotherapy is not something that is effective on this type of brain tumor. Our options were to pursue something like chemo, which would probably have no result, or try to pick ourselves up and move out of state to a proton beam center so that our son could receive treatment. We have two older children. At the time, they were five years old and three years old. And for our family to pick itself up and relocate for months at a time for our son to receive treatment, it's not something that's easily done. So one of the things that we noticed when you pick yourself up and you move out of state is that it has a multiplier effect on your family. While we were at the proton beam center in Boston, we saw people who came from all around the world. People from Europe, people from California, people from Texas, because the treatment is so effective and so powerful. But we also saw the 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 impact that this had on families. Spouses that had to separate themselves because they couldn't afford or 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 were not in a position for both spouses to travel with their children. Families that were divided up, where maybe one or two siblings would travel with the parent and the other sibling would be left behind. We were fortunate where we were able to leave our older two children with grandparents, but to this day, our older two children still feel some sense of abandonment from having been left behind because we had to choose to leave the state to provide treatment for our son out of state. When you do have to pick up and travel elsewhere and you're being cared for, you have to reintroduce the patient to all new caretakers, new doctors, new nurses, people that have no familiarity with the patient. This has happened to us twice, where we've had to travel and live up in Boston for proton beam therapy. I cannot imagine the difference in the experience had we been able to stay in our own home in Glastonbury and travel every day to Wallingford for treatment. I cannot imagine how wonderful that would have been for our family to stay intact during those times. I cannot imagine how wonderful it would have been for our over, older two children to have their siblings, to have their parents still home with them every night to put them to bed. And I can't imagine even more recently how we had to pull our son out of school for three months and live in Boston, where he could actually go to school after receiving treatment in the morning and continue on with a sense of normalcy for him. So we know and believe how powerful and how effective this proton beam therapy is. Very proud to live in this state. I feel this is a state that has tremendous resources, tremendous schools, tremendous universities. It's surprising to me that we don't yet have a facility like this here to treat the citizens of of Connecticut. So I pray every day that our son will not have to go through treatment again, but I can't imagine what a difference-maker it would be for him to be able to receive that treatment here in Connecticut and go to sleep at night in his own bed. So I thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this afternoon from a parent's perspective and from a family's perspective, and I certainly hope that in the in the not-too-distant future, we can have a wonderful facility like this here in the state of Connecticut. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sonberg. How is your son now?
So this is a this is our our three guys here. So he's in first grade. Right before the call today, we had his teacher conference on Zoom. And I'm a little biased, but his teacher said he's the most pleasurable kid they have in the entire class. So thank you for asking.
I'll agree with that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Gillen, and also Mr. Sonberg.
You're welcome.
We're going to go to Mr. Les Yanamoto. Mr. Yanamoto, are you okay? Do you need any assistance? So it looks like.
Hello, can you hear me?
Got you. Yeah, we're ready. We can hear you. We can hear you well now.
Yes, for some reason, I keep the video going, but that's technology. It's a little embarrassing for our electroengineer that I used to be to have this problem. Anyway, I'd like to take, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would like to introduce myself, my experience with proton therapy, and my support for this project. I'm Leslie, the other Leslie, Yonamoto, L-E-S-L-I-E. Yonamoto, Y-O-N-E-M-O-T-O. I'm a radiation oncologist that started with proton therapy way back in nineteen ninety-two with Loma Linda University, when it was the first hospital-based proton center at the first gantry. Had the first capability of high capacity and with four treatment rooms. And in addition to the medical research, patient care, and teaching that I did, I assisted in increasing the volume of the facility from thirty patients a day to over a hundred and fifty patients a day as a director of operations. Since Loma Linda was the only facility at this type in the late, in the nineties and early two thousand, I participated in developing multiple medical facilities with proton therapy, including University of Florida and the Anderson Cancer Center and University of Pennsylvania. I had helped various proton centers, and I worked at Loma Linda University, Reniker Proton Therapy Center, Hampton Proton Therapy Institute, ProCure, Oklahoma Proton Therapy Center, and San Diego Proton Therapy Center. I wanted to express my support for the Connecticut Proton Therapy Center, as the others have discussed. Especially, I want to give my support and second, the testimonies given by Dr. Roberts, Sonar, Menon Hall, and Gillian. This is a wonderful technology. And I'd also like to give my support for my old friend, Mr. Chandler, and support for his company, Proton International. I have treated over twenty-five hundred patients with proton therapy and personally have seen the benefits of improving cancer control and lessening the side effects with my patients. And there is an improved quality of life for not just the patients, but the family that takes care of them, as we just heard. The most cost-effective, it's more cost-effective to cure the cancer than provide palliative care. So the citizens of Connecticut will be well-served with the proton center, especially since it's locally accessible and would be run by Dr. Roberts and Sonar and Mr. Chandler. Thank you for your consideration of this valuable project.
Thank you, Mr. Yanamoto. I'm going to, again, open the floor. Is there anybody who has just joined us? I see that there look to be, it looks to be twenty more people that have logged on. Is there anybody else that wants to give public comment? Did I miss anybody? It's very quiet. Okay, so this is what's going to happen at this point. I am actually going to stay on until six o'clock. I think that's what our hearing notice said. In case there's anybody that wants to give public comment, others are able to stay on if they'd like to observe. We're going to keep everything recording. We're going to ask the court reporter to stay until six. And until then, the hearing is going to be adjourned. I just want to ask again, is there anybody else that wants to make a public comment regarding this application? All right, so for the time being, I'm just going to go ahead and mute myself. I'm going to stay here. You're welcome to stay or leave if you'd like. We are adjourned until somebody else comes back, and we will stay until six o'clock. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi, just wanted to jump on and make a quick announcement. This is Michaela Mitchell. I'm the Hearing Officer for the Yale New Haven Health Services Corporation, Hartford Healthcare Corporation application to establish proton therapy services by the acquisition of new technology to the state in a CT simulator. If there's anyone who has jumped on who wasn't previously here and wants to make public comment, please let me know that you're here. I will give you the opportunity to make that comment now. If you're just waiting like I am to see if anybody else jumps on, then we'll all continue to wait together. But if you, if you're new and you want to make a comment, just let me know. You can unmute yourself and let me know.
Hi, it's about 5:15. This is Michaela Mitchell, the Hearing Officer for the hearing. I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm going to make one more announcement at 5:45 in case there's people who want to make a public comment and then we are going to end at 6. You can also submit public comment to us electronically at CONcomment@ct.gov. The record's going to be held open until November 25th. If I don't hear anything, I'm going to go ahead and mute and wait for the next half hour or so, make one final announcement, and then we will close at 6. Thank you for joining us today.
Hi, everyone. This is Michaela Mitchell again. I'm the hearing officer for hearing number 19-32339 CON. I just wanted to extend the opportunity for anybody who may have jumped on to make a public comment before we go off the record. The last, these are the last 15 minutes for the hearing. If there's anybody on who wants to send in a written comment or knows somebody who may have wanted to make a public comment during the hearing and they couldn't do it, they can still submit a written comment that would preferably come to us by email at CONcomments, that's C-O-N-M-E-N-T at ct.gov. An alternative is that comments can be mailed to us at our mailing address at PO Box 340308, 450 Capitol Avenue, Hartford, Connecticut. Zip code is 061340308. When I come back on at the final time of six o'clock, I'm not going to offer anybody else an opportunity to speak. But I just wanted to thank everybody who has hung on for these last hour, for this last hour and a half to see if anybody was going to show up with me. And I want to thank you all for your time, especially Lisa, our court reporter, and Leslie Greer, who has been with us for most of the day. And we will be in touch with the applicants sometime tomorrow to finalize the information that is required by OHS with regard to the financials and the numbers for pediatric volume. If there's anything else, unmute yourself and let me know. Otherwise, at six o'clock, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the hearing. Thank you. All right, everyone, it's Michaela again. Michaela Mitchell, obviously, the hearing officer. At 6 o'clock, we're going to go ahead and adjourn the hearing. Please keep an eye out on the docket for updates with regard to the late files and the closure of the hearing record. And thank you again for your participation. I hope everybody has a good night and that you stay safe.